I'd like to call to order the Town Council Regular Session to order at 7:43. Town Council Chambers, Monday, April 11th. Please stand for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Roll call, please, Dale.
Council President Whaley?
Here.
Council Vice President McAtee?
Here.
Councilwoman Eddy?
Here.
Councilwoman Fogarty?
Here.
Councilman O'Neil?
Here.
All members present.
Thank you, Dale, and welcome. We have approval of the minutes of previous meetings. We had the work session March 8th, March 9th, March 15th, and March 28th, 2011.
I move approval of the work session minutes of those dates.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Motion carries 5-0-0. We also have approval of the minutes of the regular session, March 21st and March 28th.
I move approval of the minutes of the regular sessions for March 21st and March 28th.
Second.
Motion and a second, ready to vote. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, abstention, motion carries 5-0-0. We also have approval of the minutes of closed executive session, March 28th.
Ella, I would like to ask that these minutes from the closed executive session be opened and unsealed from the March 28th meeting.
We have a motion and a second. Any discussion? Does anybody have any objections? Okay. We ready to vote? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, abstention? Oh, sorry, Jim. We have a 4-1 vote.
Nay.
Oh. Do you want to do a roll call, please, Dale? And maybe we can open this up to further discussion with the nays.
Councilwoman Whaley?
Could we just hold off on that?
Sure.
One second, please. Is there a reason, Kathy and Polly, that you would like to?
It's what we're discussing on item H, so it's just the legal, it's there for you to read, unless you have something you don't want to add.
I'll just give them a minute to look.
Just, the rule on this is that if you took a vote in executive session, ultimately, that vote does have to be made public, you'd have to unseal them. In this case, no vote was taken, so it's really up to you whether you unseal them or not.
Okay, Jim, does that further clarify? Carol? Okay. Are we ready to vote? Can we do a roll call vote, please, Dale?
Council President Whaley?
I'm, okay, yes.
Council Vice President McAtee?
Yes, I'm changing my vote.
Councilwoman Eddy?
Yes.
Councilwoman Fogarty?
Yes.
Councilman O'Neil?
Aye.
Okay. Motion carries 4-1. Okay, we have the consent agenda. Would anybody like anything removed from the consent agenda?
You didn't approve those, you just opened them. Did you want to approve them?
My apologies.
I'll make a motion to, then I'll now make a motion to approve the open unsealed minutes of the executive session of March 28th.
We have a motion and a second. Ready to vote? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed?
Aye.
Abstention, motion carries 4-1-0. Thank you, Dale. We have the consent agenda. Would anybody like anything removed from the consent agenda?
I move approval of the consent agenda? Second.
Further discussion? We have a motion and a second. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, abstention, motion carries 5-0-0. Next item on the agenda is licenses. We have a resolution granting a holiday sales license to SWJ Incorporated, doing business as Psychic Kitty, 593 Kingston Road, Wakefield, Rhode Island, subject to approval by the Fire Chief and Communications Superintendent. Application by Carolyn Blasharzick. I hope I pronounced that correctly. President PO Box 6729 Warwick, and this is continued from March 28th. Do we have anyone here to represent Psychic Kitty? Welcome.
I apologize for missing the last meeting.
That's okay. Maybe you want to pull that down a little bit. If you'd like to just tell us a little bit about Psychic Kitty, and you have the camera, so you have some advertisement here.
All right. Psychic Kitty is a store that's dedicated to improving the health of dogs and cats through good nutrition, and also providing a little more fun for them in their lives. I've been in business for six years now, and been successful, have some healthier pets because of that. I am looking to move my store, actually, I'm moving my store, from South County Commons to Main Shopping Center, 593 Kingston Road, to better increase the sales and profitability of my business. So I'm asking that the Sunday sales and holiday permit be transferred to the new location.
Thank you. Do we have questions here at the table? Polly?
Being one of your happy customers. And you're moving closer to where I live, that's why. What kinds of food do you supply for these?
I provide good, healthy foods, everything from canned, to dry, to raw diets, to dehydrated diets. And I follow through. My focus is grain-free and no-grain foods, because grain is not a natural part of the diet of the dogs or cats. So that's what I focus on. You're welcome. Thank you.
Councilwoman Hagan-McAtey?
Carolyn, have you made the move yet?
Yes, today.
Today?
Yes.
Last time I saw you, you were full of boxes, packing.
They've all moved to the new location. It's a mess, but, yes.
Great. Good luck.
I hope to open on Monday.
Next Monday?
Yes.
Next Monday?
Yes, next Monday. Yes.
Good luck.
Thank you.
Councilwoman Fogarty?
Carolyn, how long has Psychic Kitty been open? I know we approved this, I remember the first.
Six years.
Six years, yeah. I was just wondering.
Six years, actually, as of yesterday.
Really? Yeah. I knew it was a while. Well, I'm glad that you've made it, you know, six years, that's great.
Thank you.
Hopefully many more.
Hopefully you had a celebration?
Thank you.
Hopefully you had a celebration?
I've been too busy packing and moving, maybe next month, I'll have a party.
And did you want to tell us the hours of operation?
During my hours are Monday through Wednesday and Fridays from 10:00 to 6:00, Thursdays 2:00 to 6:00, and Saturdays 10:00 to 5:00. I am closed on Sundays, since I'm a single employee. Me, myself, and I are running the store.
Any further questions? Okay.
Make a motion to approve new license, item A.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Ready to vote? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed, abstention, motion carries 5-0-0. Carolyn, best of luck. Our second license is a resolution granting a holiday sales license to Waves of Creation, 271 Main Street, Wakefield, Rhode Island, subject to approval by the Fire Chief. Application by Laura Winward, 765 Wardens Pond Road, Wakefield, Rhode Island. And this is a new application. Welcome. Are you Laura?
I am.
Nice to have you here. You just want to tell us a little bit about?
Sure. Waves of Creation, we were originally at 330 Main Street, so we literally just jumped up the street, like, two blocks. We represent over 60 Rhode Island artists. It's basically a gift shop. Everything is on consignment, all from Rhode Island artists. The reason we've moved to the bigger space is because we want to start offering classes, birthday parties, open studio hours, things like that. So we just think it's a good move.
Thanks. So you'll still be part of Ladies Night?
I'm sorry?
You'll still be part of Ladies Night?
Absolutely. Matter of fact, there's a reception this Friday, because that'll be our actual three-year anniversary, so that's open to everyone.
And what time is that, Laura?
5:30 to 8:30.
5:30 to 8:30.
Yeah.
That's great. Questions here at the table? Jim?
Parking issues. Have you worked out anything with Arnold's, possibly use their lot when they're open?
We haven't specifically, but the businesses in that end tend to use that lot, and they've, they haven't stopped anyone. There's also a small lot behind our building that can house probably six or seven cars that is open to be used.
Yeah, I mean, the shared parking is really important, obviously, and, you know, we try to encourage that, but, but, thank you.
Further questions here at the table?
I move approval of new license B.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Before we vote, if you just want to state your hours of operation, Laura, that would be great.
Sure. Our winter-spring hours right now are Tuesday through Saturday, 10:30 to 5:30. In the summer, we're open all seven days, 10:00 to 6:00, Monday through Friday, 10:00 to 5:00 on Saturday, and noon to 4:00 on Sunday.
Thank you. Ready to vote? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, abstention, motion carries 5-0-0. Best of luck, Laura.
Thank you.
Next, we have a resolution granting a Victor Ling license to Lastrata Wood Fried Pizza Incorporated, doing business as Lastrata Cafe and Pizzeria, 920 Mattoonik Beach Road, Wakefield, Rhode Island, subject to approval by the Fire Chief. Application by Nicholas Schneider, 770 Moonstone Beach Road, Wakefield, Rhode Island. And this is a new application. Welcome.
We also have a letter of intent for you guys, if you guys want to look at it.
If you could give it to Dale Holbert, our town clerk, that would be wonderful.
Absolutely.
Thank you.
Who doesn't love handouts? I'm Jennifer Ulbrich, by the way, I'm also partner at Lastrata Wood Fired Pizza and Lastrata Cafe and Pizzeria.
You could just state your last name again, Jen.
It's Ulbrich, O-L-B-E-S and B-O-I-R-I-C-H.
Thank you. Okay, and if you can tell us a little bit about your place?
It's by Wood Fired Pizza. We have sandwiches, salads, and pizza. We have a, we've been operating as a, under like a private chef for the past year or so, catering private events, so just want to expand our business and, and use what we have in South County, which is access to fresher produce and local farms, and so on and so forth, so.
Yeah, and we've been using Carpenter's Farm last year, because like we said, we were operating out of Providence, just doing private catering. And we, you know, this is our area, this is where we live, so we use Carpenter Farms, we plan on using them. We also use Narragansett Creamery, so we try and keep everything as local as humanly possible, fresh, and we're all about supporting the community. We want to hire everybody local, obviously, and, yeah, just, we make great pizza and you'll love it.
Questions here at the table? Polly?
Do you really use wood fire to cook your pizza?
Well, for our private events, we were using wood fire. We have, there's.
Do you have a special oven?
Yeah, we have a special oven for it, but what we're using is, we already, because that place was already designated as a pizza place, they have the beautiful Baker's Pride ovens, which we'll use. So our secret dough recipe transfers over to that. We've been using that, and as we stated on there, we've been, this is an old family recipe from his family, from the Bronx-style pizza, so it's a Neapolitan-style pizza, thin crust, good.
Jim, did you have a question? Jim?
Yeah, I'm sorry, are you next to the surf shop, or are you down across from Joyce Family Pub? Okay, across from Joyce's.
Yeah. I think it was Mattoonik House of Pizza last year.
Yes, okay. Yep. Thank you.
And then I think it was Carol?
When are you planning to open?
We'd like to open for Memorial Weekend.
And your hours of operation?
Right now, we're going to go with 11:30 to 1:00. You know, as we see the need, you know, we'll, we'll switch that around, but basically, we want to be open all the time, because I feel like that's one of the problems with a pizza place, everything closes. So just when you want pizza, there's nothing. So we want to be there.
Yeah.
We want to fill that empty void.
Ideal location, you're right across from two infamous.
I know. Exactly.
Kathy?
Jennifer, have you been in sales before?
Um, sure. No, I'm actually a graphic designer by trade.
Oh. I do sales for a graphic design company.
Pretty much, so I've probably been selling myself a long time for that.
I could tell. Well, I will make a motion to approve new license, item C.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Any more questions? Ready to vote? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed?
Make sure you guys come down, seriously. We're going to do like a big opening party.
I would love to.
Let us know.
Absolutely. Let everybody know.
Thank you, Jen, and Nick.
Good luck.
Good luck.
We have a resolution granting a theater license to Courthouse Theater Company, doing business as Contemporary Theater, 50 South County Commons Way, Wakefield, Rhode Island, subject to administrative approval. Application by Christopher Barrett. Welcome, Chris.
Hello.
29 Linden Drive, Kingston, Rhode Island, and this is a new application.
Yes, it is.
And if you'd like to tell us a little about Contemporary Theater?
Sure. We started in 2005 as a part-time company, doing it seasonally, and we've since moved to a year-round company. We're a 501(c)(3) nonprofit, and we travel around. We've put on shows at the South Kingston High School, the Towers, among other places, and we're looking to make a home, although we still do plan to travel from time to time, because that's part of our mission.
Sounds wonderful. We've been to many of the productions, and they're wonderful.
Thank you.
Questions here at the table?
Will you have a, oh, Ella?
Polly?
Will you have a theater at the Commons?
Uh, yes, yes. We aim to produce plays. We don't know exactly how many will be produced there because of capacity questions and such like that, but our hope is to at least put on some shows there.
Kathy?
So you're looking into the capacity now, you're getting that all straightened out?
Yes, yeah. There's, the Fire Marshal's been through and approved it all, and given us a number, and we're actually going even lower than that, so we should be fine.
Keep it safe, right, Chris?
Absolutely.
We don't want any reporters in your other job that you used to do, reporting a bad story, so, good, I'm glad that you're getting that taken care of.
Carol?
Chris, how many plays do you do a year, would you say, approximately?
We do approximately anywhere from six to eight.
Very good. I've been to several of them, then.
Thank you.
Great.
I guess parade's coming up, is that what's on?
No, that's, that's another theater.
Okay. I thought I saw that one.
Do you, um, do you have your next production? Do you want to let us know about it?
We do. Our next production actually is this weekend here, Composition, Friday, Saturday at 7:00 and Sunday at 2:00. So we hope to see you all there.
And where is that?
Hopefully at the Commons.
And title of the play?
It's called Composition. It's a play within a play concept, about how to make a play.
Okay. Further questions?
I move approval of license D.
D?
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Ready to vote? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, abstention, motion carries 5-0-0. Best of luck.
Thank you all very much.
We have two public hearings tonight. We have a public hearing for the purpose of obtaining citizens' views on community development, housing needs, and program performance relative to filing a Small Cities Community Development Block Grant application for the program year 2011. The town is eligible to apply for $400,000 in funds for the purpose of undertaking activities that meet one or more of the following three-named national objectives. And the first is urgent needs, the second is prevention, elimination of slums or blight, and the third is activities benefiting low or moderate-income persons. So I'd like to open the public hearing, and I'll turn it over to Steve. Thank you.
The town of South Kingston has participated in the federal Small Cities Community Development Block Grant since 1985. Since that time, over $4 million has come through this program for various activities that are identified as the, within the program objectives. Tonight is the first of two public hearings that are required for the filing of an application for CDBG funding. Tonight is an opportunity for citizen views to be expressed on community development requirements, housing needs, as well as past program performance. The draft CDBG application will be reviewed by the council at the second public hearing, which is scheduled for May 23rd. For the 2011-2012 year, the state of Rhode Island's anticipating approximately $5.67 million from this program. After set-asides and entitlement communities funding, there'll be approximately $4.2 million, of which $500,000 will be reserved to deal with foreclosure issues throughout the state. So there'll be $3.7 million available for approximately 32 Rhode Island communities to submit. Right now, the anticipated funding is a 10% increase over what was provided in 2010, before the $500,000 set-aside. During the current year, we received funding of $91,750. The town has provided, through its administrative staff, notice to all agencies, human service and social service agencies, on the availability of the application, and that the application, pre-applications need to be submitted by each agency requesting funding by this Friday, April 15th. Funds are used specifically for the following activities. One, provisions for employment opportunities for low and moderate-income individuals. Two, improvements to housing opportunities for the low and moderate-income individuals and families. And three, provisions for community facilities whose principal service is for the low moderate-income families and individuals within the community. Once all the applications are accepted, the Planning Department will prepare a, a single application up to the $400,000 funding level that will then come back to the council on May 23rd after review through the Planning Board. So at this time, it would be appropriate to open up to the floor on any questions or concerns relative to community needs dealing in the housing areas or social service agencies that may be willing to, wishing to submit applications prior to Friday.
Thank you, Steve. At this time, I just want to see if there's any questions here at the table before I open it to the public. Jim?
Yes, Steve, I'm glad you mentioned, this Friday is the last day for applications.
That's correct. March 15th was when the notices were sent out to the various agencies.
And finally, knowing what's going on in Washington, is this safe from severe budget cuts, this program, this community development program?
It is a federal block grant program, which means that it does require the annual appropriations. Actually, I think it's a three-year authorization, but if there's recisions, they could, in fact, affect this program, as it could affect almost any federal program. So while the anticipation is for the $3.7 million being available, that could be substantially reduced. Obviously, applying for $400,000, the average that we've seen is about $120,000 a year, and some of those were as high as $200,000. Last year, at the $91,000, that was one of the lowest that we had seen. I think one of the major activities that this program has addressed on a repeated basis is, and a continuing basis, is the housing rehabilitation program. What that is, is a program that's administered through the CAP Agency on behalf of the town of South Kingston, where low-interest loans are made available for persons owning residential one or two, two-family units within the community, to bring them up to building code standards. That, that program has had remarkable success and continues to be in demand with that income group that needs the assistance to be able to get those loans. So we would expect that a major piece of the application will be in the housing rehab market for, for next year's application as well.
Further questions before we open it to the floor? Okay, at this time, this is a public hearing. If anyone has any questions or comments, please come to the mic and state your name. Can we entice any of you with one question? Seeing there's no questions, I'll come back to the table. Does anyone have any questions? I know I have a few. So Steve, you see this, these funds as being a little bit limited this year with the economic state of affairs in the state?
We've seen reductions in the funding availability as, as we've gone forward. We were up at $250,000 in the 2009 year, but a major portion of that was with the rehab program that I mentioned earlier. For the 2010-year program, we did not receive housing rehab dollars, because we were still working off of the 2009 appropriation. It also provided for $90,000 that went to the Adult Day Services addition that is planned. I think that if I was to estimate what would be available, it'd probably be in the $120,000 range, unless there's federal cutbacks.
While you're finishing that, is it pretty much based on per capita here in the state?
No, it isn't. It's based on the actual program components that each of the 32 communities are going to submit. The determination is made through the, through the governor's office.
And have, Steve, have we received any applications thus far? And how many do we usually receive, Ray? I'm sorry?
Dozens to fourteen, generally. We send out about twenty, including the municipal department.
I know when I frequently attend some of the governors' forums throughout the state, there's always a big need for transportation for our disabled, so I don't know if there's an application there, but hopefully, if there's somebody out in the community that would like to file an application, hopefully we'll, with the need in our community this year, hopefully we'll receive more than 12, and we'll have to pick and choose, so. Okay, at this time, if there's no further questions? Jim, did you have any more?
I'm just surprised, I guess, as you are, that we don't receive more responses to the, to our mailouts and applications. I know there's not a lot of need out there, I just don't, I really wouldn't have thought.
I know, and looking at the list that was provided with other CDBG grants that we've, have been funded, you know, I, I, what jumps off the page at me is sidewalks, that's been an issue here at the Town Council table. You know, again, transportation, repairs on our buildings, so we're hoping that we receive many, many more, and we'll have to pick and choose. So at this time, if there's no further questions, any, I'll go back out to the audience. Any further questions?
Not then, Ellen, I move that we close the public hearing, A.
Motion and a second to close the public hearing. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, abstention, motion carries 5-0-0. And can we have a motion for public hearing, 7A?
I move approval of public hearing, 7A.
Second.
Could I ask that the resolution, being accorded with Ray's memo, it would be to direct staff to prepare the program year 2011 CDBG application to undertake eligible activities and grant amounts not to exceed $400,000. Further, to authorize the town clerk to order for advertisement to public hearing relative to the filing of the, the program year 2011 CDBG grant application to be held on May 23rd for the purposes of reviewing the draft application and obtaining citizen views on the proposed activities.
Second.
Thank you, Steve. We have a motion and a second. Any further questions? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed, abstention, motion carries 5-0-0. Which brings us to our second public hearing. This is a public hearing relative to proposed amendments to the zoning ordinance, Article 5, supplementary regulation, Section 504, special use permits, concerning the citing of on-site wastewater treatment systems in proximity within 150 feet of wetland areas as shown on Exhibit 1 attached here, too.
Council President Whaley, I have a communication.
Okay.
Communication dated April 11th, 2011, from Mark Bolinger, Executive Director of the Salt Pond Coalition, to the Town Council, voicing. the Salt Pond Coalition, to the town council voicing their support for the proposed revisions to Section 504 of the town zoning ordinance.
Thank you, Dale. Welcome, Vin and Ray.
Good evening. Initial work on devising amendments to Section 504 actually began more than three years ago with a discussions by a small working group that was comprised of then-building official Russell Brown, principal planner Ray Nickerson, and local civil engineer and septic designer Joe Frisella. That initial work was generally towards updating the ordinance to better consider applications for special use permits in light of emerging onsite wastewater treatment system technology and changing state regulations. Over time, the zoning board has dealt with this issue with these applications, and on a number of occasions, the applications have been contentious in neighborhood settings and often involving prolonged and protracted review processes before the zoning board. That's been especially true with some recent applications that were in the Biscuit City area in Kingston. I made note in my memo to the town manager discussing this of two particular properties, one of which was on Parkwood Drive, which was, actually had like a three-year start-to-finish process insofar as a long review before the zoning board, had a zoning board approval that was then appealed to the Superior Court, and then the Superior Court ultimately allowed the, ultimately resulting in a two-bedroom home being built on a lot there. There was more recently, and the council would be aware of, will recall this, on Ledgewood Drive, which was an application for a single-family home on a property there, vacant property there, and that actually ended up having three different versions of the application, the first two of which were referred to the town council for consideration under DEM regulations, under what I guess we used to call a formal wetlands application. Under those circumstances, the town council has the ability to deny an application, and that particular one I'm speaking of, but by reference, was denied twice. It reemerged a third time with a petition for a different plan for a special use permit and also a dimensional variance to allow for the construction on the property. That third iteration ultimately was negated when a neighboring property owner bought the lot in question, and it remains vacant. And I think these community concerns regarding these types of applications was exacerbated by the flood events of last, last year. As the council will recall, there was a petition presented to you last April, signed by 63 residents requesting an immediate moratorium on the issuance of special use permits for applications of septic systems in proximity to wetland areas. And the, my office was, the correspondence was referred to our planning department for consideration, and we subsequently met with the planning board and had conversations with the Conservation Commission and met with the residents who had authored the petition at that time as well, and that kind of led to the process of bringing these forward for consideration this evening. Basically, the amendments try to achieve two things. Number one, to bring our regulations into consistency with the revised DEM regulations on OWTS, which was formerly known as ISDS, so that's new terminology. And secondly, and perhaps more importantly, from the local perspective, staff and board perspective, to strengthen and provide more specific criteria for the zoning board to utilize in the consideration of these types of application. In addition to staff and this, our special legal counsel for planning and zoning, the proposed amendments have been drafted with the assistance of the Conservation Commission, as mentioned, URI's Nemo program, which is the non-point education for municipal officials program, and also the, some pro bono review by our land use consultants, Horstley Witten Group. We do feel that the reviews and recommendations of all the parties have enabled development of a comprehensive regulations that will appropriately address new residential development proposals in proximity to wetland areas. It is important to note that Section 504, which has been on the books for some number of years, only relates, is not applicable to newly created lots. As a matter of fact, newly created lots must, under our existing subregs, be designed so that no OWTS is sighted within 150 feet of a wetland area. That's a specific finding the planning board looks to for every single lot that's proposed, new lots. The new regulations are therefore only applicable to legal, non-conforming lots of record, or legal lots of record that exist today. We performed a desktop GIS analysis, and I think the number that came back in terms of what this may affect in our estimate was an estimate of about 30 parcels or fewer. I would add that this was a desktop analysis and doesn't necessarily comb through all of the many lots in the community, but we think it's a working number that is reasonably representative of what we feel the effect would be. The amendments, in our view, will provide an improved environment for consideration of applications, especially concerning impacts beyond the siting of the septic system, such as drainage management and avoidance or mitigation of off-site neighborhood impacts. Some of the features of the amendments are, one, we will bring our ordinance in terminology and conformance with DEM regulations; two, prohibit the consideration of applications requesting special use permits and an additional request for a dimensional variance, you know, a layering of a request for relief; allow for the replacement or repair of existing septic systems in proximity to wetlands without requiring a special use permit, providing performance standards met; it would clarify the role of the Conservation Commission in the process of recommendation and pre-review before the zoning board consideration; we would detail informational requirements for Conservation Commission advisory review; establish performance standards for conventional OWTS as well as those incorporating advanced or alternative design technologies; and also, in that area, would include minimum standards for stormwater management and maximum impervious lot coverage. The amendments also detail the informational requirements for the application to the zoning board; and lastly, require a post-construction certification by a registered professional engineer that all site infrastructure and improvements have been installed per the approved plan and all workers, and any compliance with any conditions imposed by the zoning board. The planning board has formally recommended these amendments for your affirmative consideration. Their November 10th, 2010 correspondence is, was included in the council package for this evening's public hearing, and the proposed text, if enacted, is proposed to replace in entirety the existing 504.1 section, and staff would certainly echo the planning board's recommendations for the ordinance amendments. I think we have a, I think the proposal will improve our ability to deal with these types of requests, and if, and we offer in the, if the council, after the public hearing has concluded, if the council is in agreement with that position, we had offered a draft resolution for your consideration in this regard. Ray Nickerson, our principal planner and specialist in environmental issues, is also integral to this development, and I ask him to offer his comments in brief to conclude our presentation.
I just wanted to go through, without, without going line by line, briefly going through maybe some of the changes that we have made that are, to ask the question, why is the ordinance or this section different than what we have on the books right now? And there are, there are a number of new additions that we've made, as Vin alluded to, one of them being under Section 504.1AB whereby the zoning board may not grant dimensional relief for those who are also seeking a special use permit. There's also a provision whereby if the applicant is repairing or replacing an existing system and complies with the performance standards that are in here regarding the use of advanced technology, then the building official can grant the building permit for that, assuming that they have their DEM license. So in that case, there would not be a need for them to go through the process of getting a special use permit. Again, the proviso there and the rationale to encourage people to incorporate the advanced technology in, into their systems. We did add a couple of items. There's, there are 16 items that an applicant has to submit to the Conservation Commission and the zoning board. The Conservation Commission, as you know, is advisory. They review these 504 applications and present findings to the zoning board. We did add a couple, one of them that we encourage the applicant to use low-impact development techniques and to explain how that's being done. And the other, just for additional existing information concerning the surrounding locus, that they show other septic systems that are within 200 feet of the property, which had not been in there. I think an important item that's added here within the amended text is that subsurface drains are prohibited. That's where an engineer can go in and artificially manipulate the natural groundwater table, lower it, then get the test to pass muster at DEM, problem being there that ultimately nature goes back to where the groundwater table would normally be, and the, and the new homeowners are stuck with the ramifications of that. So the state does allow a property owner to do that. It's a one-year process, so here we have a situation where the town standard is somewhat more stringent than what the state allows. We also added three additional items on the performance standards, one being that we finally set a maximum previous lot coverage, and that's, that's 15%. That's, that's of the buildable area. So if you have a one-acre parcel and half of it are already wetlands, then we're talking about the half that's upland, so 15% of that total coverage would be allowed. And Vin and I and Dennis Venatieri, we looked at an awful lot of examples before we set that figure and calculated total previous cover for typical homes in South Kingston, and 15% may seem like a small number, but in reality, you find that, for the most part, it doesn't restrict somebody to build a reasonably sized dwelling on their parcel. We also require the applicant now demonstrate what efforts have been made to minimize wetland impacts and overall site disturbance, and have included a provision whereby the applicant has to show how the disturbed areas will be restored. I think, I think those are the most important parts of this. Oh, we also require, now require that they provide a plan to show us how the, the site will be revegetated for those natural areas that are disturbed.
Thank you, Ray. Thank you, Vin.
Any questions you may have?
Do we have questions here at the table? Jim?
Yeah, Michael, can we just review from the work session tonight, the state's position on this, South Kingston, following up on the Newton Law conversation we had, the state will allow South Kingston to move forward with this ordinance?
Yes, it would. There was a Supreme Court case, Newton case, in which the court ruled that a zoning board cannot grant simultaneously a special use permit and a variance, dimensional variance. Then Rhode Island general law was adopted 42, 24, 45, which basically said that councils did have the ability, if they so desired, to permit special use permits and dimensional variances to be granted at the same time, but that's only if you decide to do that. In this case, we're basically saying that when it comes to the onsite wastewater treatment systems which require a special use permit, that if we're going to be granting that, we're going to prohibit any deviation from the dimensional requirements, that side yard, front yard, backyard, in terms of the placement of the home. There's no question in my mind that we can legally do that based upon the case law and what's in the Rhode Island general laws. As to the standards, as we discussed in the earlier session, there are minimal standards that have been established by the state, and the communities are allowed to set those standards at a higher level.
Thank you. Further questions here at the table? Carol?
Ray, about the 15% of the buildable area that the, the house that you're putting up can only be 15% of the buildable area. In the current ordinance, is there any limitation on how large the house could be?
There's no limit on the impervious cover, no.
Okay, and that includes driveways, parking areas, walkways, patios, rooftops, so that's even beyond just the house itself?
If the driveways, if the driveway is paved, it would be impervious.
And that is considering the fact that there's wetlands involved in this property also? I mean, so I'm just trying to picture this in my mind. I mean, 15% really doesn't seem like...
It really doesn't seem...
Much of an area.
But you'd be surprised when you look at how much of your dwelling actually occupies the upland and how much of it is your yard and, and you know, your outdoor space. As I said, Vin and I and Dennis took a bunch of them at random, in some cases, our three homes, and calculated the roof, the driveway, and it tends to come in at about, in many cases, less than the 15%, surprisingly.
Actually, there was a lot of discussion over that, what the percentage would be appropriate, and there was some recommendations that it should be 8%, but we felt that was a, perhaps a little more restrictive towards the ability to use property than would be prudent to recommend, so that's where we arrived at the recommendation for the 15%. And you know, I guess the rationale for placing a cap on that is because when you add hard surfaces to a property, you know, you create, you know, not more water necessarily coming off, but you increase the speed of the water coming off the property. So the potential for adverse impacts to adjoining properties, you know, gets higher with more, you know, impervious cover applied to the property. And many of these properties are in circumstances where they're proximate to sensitive in the wetland areas, but also, you know, other neighboring property owners that have been previously developed that may have water issues, so we're trying to be sensitive towards not creating issues through the allowances of, of recommended ordinance.
Let me just ask you this, Vin. I mean, in, in a normal lot that doesn't have any water issues, is there a limit on how much impervious coverage there can be?
There is a, there is a lot coverage limitation that's presently in the zoning, but I think it's just how much building you can place on the lot. It doesn't necessarily deal with...
It's set by setbacks, you mean?
Well, no, there's a lot coverage per zone percentage, 20 to 25% based, differing with the different zoning districts we have, but that just deals with buildings, not, not hard surfaces other than roofs, but...
Oh, that, that's just for roofs, the 20 to 25?
No, it's just for the buildings itself, but yeah, it's, you know, basically the footprint of the building, there's a limitation on how big that can be.
Okay, thank you. Further questions here at the table? Kathy?
Do you see a lot of use of these subsurface drains on any of the properties in this town? The use of the subsurface drains, have we seen a lot of that being used before? Or is it just, this is just a protective measure?
There have been cases that I've known of in South Kingston, I don't know how many where, where the, where the lot has been, again, the groundwater table has been artificially manipulated, and there are also areas in town that tend to have seasonal high-water tables, and they have French drains. Those were probably marginal lots, and it's questionable whether they should have been developed, but that's, hopefully, this is progress.
I think we've got a few of those people in front of us about that issue. No, I appreciate the work that went in it because this is a, a subject that keeps coming up, especially every spring. It seems that when the water tables get high, I think pretty much every year that I've been sitting up here, we've had problems with it. So just to give clarification to the Conservation Commission and guidance, you know, to forward on to the zoning board, I think it was definitely necessary. Thank you.
Carol?
As far as the application that they have to fill out for the Conservation Commission, it seems pretty lengthy. You have 18, 18 different categories that they, questions that they have to answer. How comprehensive or how difficult is it for someone to, I mean, I know we don't want to make it too easy, but how difficult is it? to make it too easy, but how difficult is it to fill out an application like that? Is that a standard, hire an engineer and they'll know exactly how to do it?
Most of the folks that go through the process have a lawyer and an engineer, and certainly the local engineers know the drill. If you look at these, Carol, an awful lot of the 18 is also just doing the research. You call it up online and you'll find out what, how close you are to an SA water. So that's table, most of it's tabletop data. But you bring up a good point because as we went through this and established these particular requirements, I think we were sensitive and kept that in mind, not to get too carried away. And we've made them a little more restrictive, but I don't think to the point where it significantly impacts the cost would be to the property owner.
Oh, thanks, Ray.
Do you have a third communication?
Yes, I apologize. I have one more communication. It's dated November 10th, 2010, and it's from the Planning Board recommending the amendments as proposed and incorporating the findings of fact and consistency with the comprehensive community plan and the findings of consistency with the purposes of zoning.
Thank you very much.
I would note also that at a prior meeting, and I can't tell you the exact date, it's also reviewed by the Conservation Commission, and they recommended approval of it.
Okay. I'm going to, at this time, take questions from the public. If you could, come to the microphone and state your name. Thank you. Welcome.
Good evening. My name is Donald Packer. I'm an attorney in South Kingston. I'm also a resident of South Kingston. And I've been dealing with 504 since it was passed. At the time it was passed, we called it the Engineer, Biologist, Soil Scientist, and Lawyers Relief Act. It's probably nomenclature today would be it's a stimulus package. So I'm not going to attack or challenge 504 on its merits. I want to discuss one section of 504, and that's 504-1B. And that was a section that has been referred to as not allowing variances with the special use permits that are required. And I'm just going to read it, so if anyone here doesn't have it. It is, the sentence that I'm actually concerned about is the second sentence in that section. And it says, "It is specifically noted that residential," and parenthetically, I'll say, "apparently commercial development would be permitted to get a variance, but for some reason, somebody with a residential lot can't get a variance." But it says, "Residential construction associated with an application for a special use permit for an OWTS must meet the minimum dimensional setbacks of the zoning district in which the property is situated. The zoning board may not grant any dimensional relief or setbacks concurrent with the special use permit application." I don't understand the rationale behind that limitation. If we accept the reasoning behind this proposal, as the Planning Board states in its recommendation, to protect and preserve both freshwater and coastal wetland resources, why are we not encouraging people building on these lots to come and ask for variances, to relocate their structures further from the wetland? This is not an issue of just the OWTS impacting the wetland. DEM and Coastal Resources also feel that the structures impact the wetland. This ordinance is an ordinance for an in-ground sewage disposal system. And what we're doing here is trying also to restrict the structures that are being built on the home, which really have no relation to the septic system, the OWTS system, which is being placed in the ground. Coastal Resources and DEM take a position that those homes that are being constructed closer to the wetland have impacts on the wetland as well, because that impact is to the critters in the wetland that are being affected by the human activity that gets closer and closer to the wetland edge. So if what we're trying to do is protect those wetlands, what we are actually doing is telling someone that you can't come, if you're in an R80 zone, for example, and you have a 50-foot front yard setback, you can't come to the zoning board and say, "Listen, I really want to build my house 20 feet from the road. It has no impact upon anybody. There's plenty of parking on the lot. My neighbors are two acres away, and it doesn't have an impact. And I want to get my house as far away from the wetland as I can get it away from the wetland." The zoning board can't do that. I got to come in and file an application for a building permit that puts my house right on the wetland edge, if it's possible to do that." Coastal Resources kind of goes back, I've been doing this a long, long time in the Washington County communities, and the towns initially took positions that, well, we're not going to grant variances to move houses to side yard setbacks or front yard setbacks to get them away from wetlands or coastal features. And then Coastal Resources and DEM would say, "Well, we're not going to vary our buffer zone requirements. We're the state, they're just a town. You go back to the town, you tell the town that we're the state." So now you've got a property owner that's stuck between a rock and a hard place. The towns begin to understand that varying your setback is not necessarily a bad idea, particularly when the trade-off is to increase the setbacks on the buffer zones from these sensitive areas that the state and the town are trying to protect. So filing an application for a special use permit, along with an application for the variance, to relocate your house into a side yard setback or front yard setback or rear, whatever it might be, in order to maximize the setback from the wetland, minimize the impact on the wetland, would be fully vetted before the Conservation Commission and the special use permit application. The zoning board, with the public hearing, zoning board is required to approve it by a four-to-one vote at a minimum. You have to have four votes out of five. So it's not an easy process to get applications like that approved if you don't have a good reason to do it. Now, I spoke similarly a number of years ago in Narragansett against a similar proposed restriction. And what Narragansett ultimately decided to do was, they allowed you to get a variance from a dimensional setback, provided that the variance you're seeking does not allow you to get closer to the wetland, but it must allow you to get further from the wetland. In other words, let's say I'm holding a line where CRMC wants me to be with this side of my house, and I want a front yard variance so I can get a bigger house. Well, that's not a justification in order to get a variance approved. You got to show the zoning board that this is where Coastal Resources wants my house to be, and in order to get there, you got to give me eight feet, 10 feet into that front yard setback. Now, I can show you that I still have my off-street parking, I can show you that my drainage works, and obviously I have an OWTS approved from DEM, so my septic system works. So I don't understand how that restriction got to be added to the 504 requirement. And variances, we know, are granted routinely by all zoning boards due to lots and constraints on lots and difficulties with lots. And we're only talking about the structure here. You've already adopted an ordinance that says you can't put a septic system within 150 feet without going to the zoning board and getting a special use permit. If what you want to do is stop structures from getting within 150 feet, then you don't say you can't get a variance. You put an ordinance together that says you can't build any houses within 150 feet of the wetland. And finally, just a couple comments on who and what we're affecting here. The planning memo indicates that they think there might be 30 lots. Now, I know there's no requirement to notify anybody of that, but if there are really 30 people out there that this ordinance is going to affect, couldn't we have sent them a notice? Not certified mail, it's not required. Postcard notices go out from the planning department for subdivisions to all sorts of people. It's no big deal. Let somebody know that this ordinance, which they think, if somebody actually read it and was aware of it, says, "Oh, well, that sounds like a good idea. You can't put a septic system within 150 feet without going to the zoning board." But you're not telling these people that not only can't you put the septic system there without going to the zoning board, but guess what? You can put the septic system there by going to the zoning board and get a special use permit within 150 feet, but you're not going to be able to build a house. So if there's really 30 people that are going to be affected, couldn't we have sent them a notice to let them know what's going on? And if it's only 30 people, you're talking about 30 people who are going to potentially, and each lot is individual on its own, potentially lose the value of their property. Confiscating their property by an ordinance that does not even allow them to go to the zoning board and say, "Listen, this is my situation on a lot-by-lot basis. This is my situation, and I want you to consider my lot for what it is, and I think that my lot can be buildable without impacting the neighbors or anyone else, and I want you to consider that." Just because a neighborhood has come in and caused agenda for the zoning board and the council, I don't believe is justification to try to shut the door on people asking for that kind of relief. So I don't have a problem with 504, but I would ask that you strike that provision that prevents someone from coming in and trying to get relief for their structure. Thank you.
Does anybody want to respond? Ray?
Donny brings up a few good points, but by saying that somehow the person won't be able to put a house on the lot because they need the relief. What we were trying to do is look at lots that have such site constraints, that they are problematic. And there are, there would be many scenarios where a person who couldn't get relief from the dimensional setback wouldn't necessarily not be able to put a house on that lot. They would put one on the lot that was smaller than what they had intended. And this is the example that we saw with tri-level. They came in three different times. In the beginning, it was a very large home. It was denied by the council under the wetland application. The second time, and then the third time, the house was smaller. The applicant was still seeking relief. They could have reduced the footprint more and not have needed that setback relief. So I think Donny's, you know, position that somehow it voids someone's ability to put in a house. It may not be as large a home as they'd like, but it's plausible, I would think.
Carol?
Ray, I just had a question for you. With these new onsite wastewater treatment systems, aren't they smaller and require less land and allow you to build your house closer than in the previous septic systems where you had to be so many feet? The house had to be so many feet from the septic system and all of that?
But the advanced technology systems, if you propose one of those, you get a 50% reduction in the leach field from DEM. So your point is correct, that the leach field itself would be smaller than a conventional leach field.
So it allows you more land to build your house on because your leach field isn't taking up as much room?
Takes up less space, correct.
That's right. So you're, that's the point I'm trying to make. So in essence, it actually gives you more space than you would have had with the old septic systems or leaching fields that you...
Correct.
Had to have before. And I also, in the required information of 504.5, number three, a site plan has to be, is required that proposes the location of the OWTS, the residence, the impervious cover, and all other improvements. So you couldn't, you wouldn't be able to put in a new OWTS system without having a house plan to go with it. Is that correct?
Correct.
I believe Mr. Packer was saying that you could put on the new septic system, but you couldn't, you know, essentially not be able to build a house. But I don't think that was fair as what's written in this ordinance.
I can't stand up here and guarantee that there isn't a house lot in South Kingston that can't, won't be built upon now because of the inability to seek relief. Maybe there is one, but I think that, I guess my point with Donny's posture was that somehow there are many instances where you need that setback, that dimensional relief to put in a home. There may be, if you have your hot set on, a house that's, you know, X thousand square feet, the footprint, where you may have to reduce it. And I think that's what the science community that work with us and the Conservation Commission are saying. There is a certain, almost carrying capacity on certain lots, given the extent of their environmental constraints. It doesn't mean you can't put a home on the lot. It's just that we see quite often, the initial design that comes in is really ambitious for that parcel, given the natural constraints, be it slope, high-water table, proximity to wetland.
Don, did you want to come?
Yes, just, I think when Ray says, "We tried to pick out the lots with such severe site constraints that they would be problematic." How do they know that? From a GIS map? I mean, these are site-specific applications. And if there's 30 of them, why can't these 30 people come and present their application? And I know that people come in with aggressive sites. One of my biggest beefs as a practitioner in this area is the first place people go is to their architect. And they design these houses, and then they come to the lawyer and the engineer and say, "I want to cram this on this lot." And I can't tell you how many people I've just said, "It's not happening. I'm not filing the application." I think the tri-level application that Ray refers to proves my point. An application was submitted that if, and I'm not familiar with it, I'm just listening, if the application was too big, the vetting system worked. They had to downsize the house. And if it was still too big, the vetting system worked. They had to downsize the house. But no matter how they downsized the house, they were still going to need that front yard setback in order to maximize the distance to these sensitive wetlands that we're trying to deal with. And I think just shutting the door on these people is just not fair. And Carol, I was just indicating, obviously, you wouldn't file an application without a house on it, but what I was trying to say was, yeah, you could go through the process and get your septic system approved, but there's not going to be a mechanism to get your house approved if that variance provision is in there. So I'm just asking the council, and I don't have a problem, everything in this ordinance is very similar to what was previously. It's been updated, and it's a better ordinance. But I'm just asking that you not take away the opportunity for people to come in and ask that they improve the environmental situation by moving their structures as far away from the wetland as necessary. If they need a variance to do that, they ought to be able to go and ask for it.
Thank you.
Actually, Don, I'm glad that you brought up the question about communication because I had two questions on my list. And one of them was, will there be communication to the owners of the lots? Or has there been? And are the 30 lots or 30 parcels geographically in one location, or are they spread out around the town?
I can tell you, from a legal perspective, there is no necessity to individually notify individual lot owners. I think they did that analysis more as background and information, just to get a feel as to whether or not this is going to impact hundreds of lots or fewer. And it's been repeated many times. It might be 30, it could be more, it could be fewer. But certainly in terms, the ordinance is properly before you legally, in terms of a vote on it this evening. The other issue I would have with that is that you would, in a sense, set a precedent that every time you adopted an amendment to the zoning ordinance, you'd first have to somehow identify every parcel that might be affected one way or another and then give out notice. That's just not practical. And that's just not practical, which is frankly why the law doesn't require. It's just not practical to try to identify all of those people, then give them notice, and then have a hearing. On the other hand, when someone does want to make a change and does seek relief, yeah, there is a requirement that within that 200-foot radius, that's very definable. You must notify those people.
Thank you, Mike. Further questions here at the table? Any further questions from the public? Please come forward. If you could come to the mic, please, state your name.
Good evening. My name is Lorraine Jubert. I'm a resident of the town, and I also had the privilege of working with the Conservation Commission on the ordinance through my work at URI with the Nonpoint Education for Municipal Officials program. As a town resident for more than 30 years, I urge the council to approve the proposed amendments to Section 504 of the zoning ordinance pertaining to special use permits. These amendments are the minimum necessary to maintain the water quality function of wetlands and buffers to protect and prevent further degradation of the town's water resources. According to DEM's current listing of impaired waters, that's Section 303D, the 2010 draft report, the town's impaired water bodies, those that are not clean enough for swimming and fishing, include more than two dozen water bodies in the town. In almost all cases, polluted stormwater runoff and nutrients from stormwater or septic systems are considered responsible. These include Aleweif Brook, Asa Pond, Barbara Pond, Chapuxit River and tributaries, Fresh Meadow Brook and tributaries, Green Hill Pond, Hundred Acre Pond, Indian Lake, Indian Run Brook and tributaries, Larkin Pond, Long Pond, Mitchell Brook, Mumford Brook, Pettaquambskit River, Point Judith Pond, Rocky Brook and tributaries, Sagatucket Pond, Sagatucket River, Silver Lake, Teal Pond Stream, Thirty Acre Pond, Trustum Pond, Tucker Pond, Whitehorn Brook, Warden Pond, and Yagu Pond. Current research shows that wetland buffers function to filter and change pollutants, but only when not overwhelmed by OWTS pollutants and stormwater runoff from roofs, driveways, and other impermeable surfaces. Impervious covers closely associated with water quality. In Rhode Island, a map analysis conducted by DEM found that native trout were generally found only in watersheds where the average impervious cover was 4% or less. By comparison, the average impervious cover in the entire Pocketuck Reservoir watershed is about 3%. So in many of the town's cleaner water bodies, the watershed impervious is about 3% or 4%. So we're at the point where we're going to lose our most precious water quality conditions. An extensive body of research nationally shows that healthy streams are found in watersheds where the impervious cover is 10% or less. It should be known that many towns are beginning to establish impervious cover limits throughout the town, not just for building cover. For example, even East Providence regulates impervious cover for various reasons, but including water quality. The proposed amendments place reasonable restrictions on the lot area that can be built in proportion to the suitable land available to infiltrate and store runoff. And it's important to note that many on wet lots, it's impossible to maintain the runoff, to control the runoff on the lot when there's high water table to begin with. We have seen that simply requiring advanced wastewater treatment is not enough. That is the minimum DEM requirement for building on high water tables regardless. Controlling the building footprint and other impervious cover is essential to prevent more of our streams and coastal ponds from being added to the impaired list. It is necessary to protect public health from OWTS by allowing rainwater to recharge groundwater and dilute wastewater effluent, and it's needed to prevent nuisance flooding with loss of use or costly damage to neighboring properties. Under state zoning-enabling legislation, the town, not DEM, has authority to manage land use, and the town is responsible for controlling impacts associated with those land use decisions. The town is also required to effectively control stormwater runoff under the town's Phase II RIPDES stormwater permit. Adopting these amendments will help the town comply with that permit, which specifically includes wetland buffer protection as a way to avoid and reduce stormwater runoff. The proposed amendments are reasonable as Section 504 pertains only to applications involving OWTS siding within a wetland buffer. In these areas, more than the minimum DEM standards are needed to protect the town's highest-quality streams and coastal waters, and to protect groundwater for both private and public wells. It does not affect areas served by sewer and water that are designated for higher-density commercial and residential growth. Most importantly, the proposed amendments do not prohibit fair use of property. It simply allows the town to review a project, ensure that the extent of development is in keeping with the capability of the site to treat both wastewater and stormwater runoff without damage to neighboring properties and common resources. It allows town staff and board members to condition approval of an application on reasonable restrictions, such as limiting building footprint, appropriate use of OWTS technologies and stormwater controls, and to mitigate unavoidable impacts by restoring areas disturbed during construction. According to the town's comprehensive plan, South Kingstown's water resources are among the town's greatest natural and economic assets, contributing to South Kingstown's unique character and quality of life. As a resident, I believe protecting these resources for residents and future generations is very much your responsibility tonight. As a cooperative extension water resource specialist at URI, it is my professional judgment that the proposed amendments are not only needed to achieve those town goals, but are long overdue. I urge you to approve these amendments without further delay. Thank you.
Thank you. Further discussion here at the table?
The audience is through.
Any further comments from the public? Jim?
I'm just really pleased with this work by Ray and Vin. I wish this had been done a couple of years ago. I know our council would avoid a lot of anguish from a lot of folks, specifically in the Biscuit City, Ledgewood, and Little Rest neighborhoods. I think the council would do the town and our water quality right by passing this amendment this evening to the zoning ordinance, and I would encourage the council to pass this without amendments.
Further comments here at the table?
I certainly agree with Jim. I think that the zoning board has been hoping that the council and Ray and Vin would help them in planning and would help them out with these new on-water site wastewater treatment systems, because they really needed to have new direction, and I think this provides excellent advice for them. So I'm sure the zoning board agrees with you.
Further comments here at the table?
Hearing that, I make a motion to close the public hearing.
I have one comment. Excuse me, Kath. Sorry, I'm just trying to wait until everybody speaks. What was brought by you, Mr. Packer, 504-1B? It's basically that last sentence. But for clarification, the advisory role will then turn to the Conservation Commission? Is that the understanding here? So that if somebody has a house that they would still like, they would go to the Conservation Commission and seek before not going to the planning board? Did I get that right? Ray? I'm looking at page three of the Planning Department memorandum, and it just says, "Clarify the advisory role of the Conservation Commission in the process of applying for a special use permit before the zoning board of review."
There was a particular case that came about, and there was some confusion as to the proper procedure that should be followed. What Vin was alluding to in that memo is just the rewording of that section to make it clear that the Conservation Commission's role in providing an advisory opinion to the zoning board, that's really all that does. So an applicant who wants a special use permit fills out the zoning board form, then files with the Conservation Commission. They hold the hearing, render an opinion, forward that to the zoning board. That's why that's in there.
Thank you. Mr. Packer, did you have further comments?
Conservation Commission recommendation really does not get a property owner past the impediment that he or she cannot apply for a variance in conjunction with the special use permit. It's really just an advisory review, and the Conservation Commission's review is generally limited to those 18 standards that are listed. So they would review that submittal and give a recommendation to the zoning board on that submittal alone.
Okay. I think at this time, everybody is okay here at the Town Council table with that last. The zoning board may not grant any dimensional relief or setbacks concurrent with the special use permit application. So I think that the vote is ready to be taken. Before we do take the vote, I have to close the public hearing. I just wanted to comment that we have had many, many people in front of us here with Biscuit City and the flooding that has taken place and the petitions. My tenure here on the Town Council, this is my fifth year, and we've had many, many people in front of us with concerns about this. So I am going to support the way that it's written. And I think that's the feel for the rest of the Town Council members here. So I'm going to just open it up to any last-minute comments before we take a vote. We're going to close the public hearing. Okay. Can we have a motion to close the public hearing?
Second.
Motion in a second. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed. Abstention. Motion carries 500. And if somebody could read the motion on page four, that would be great.
I make a motion that the Town Council hereby approves Public Hearing 7B as detailed in Agenda Exhibit 1 in approving these amendments to the zoning ordinance, Article 5, Section 504, special use permits. The council specifically incorporates the findings and recommendations of the planning board as detailed in the correspondence to the Town Council dated November 10, 2011.
We have a motion in a second. Any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed. Abstention. Motion carries 500. Okay. This brings us to Communications B. A resolution adopted by the Jamestown Town Council in support of House Bill 2011, House 5804, an act relating to elections and amendments to Rhode Island General Law 17-11-1, Division of Towns and Representative Districts into Voting Districts, in opposition to House Bill 2011 and House 5961, an act relating to labor relations, school employee arbitration, and the support of legislation to amend Rhode Island General Law 16-7-44. School housing project costs are received, placed on file, and the Town Council further directs.
We discussed this at the work session, and we've already supported these bills in the House and the Senate and adopted, sent forward a resolution. So I would suggest that we place it on file.
We have a motion in a second. Any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed. Abstention. Motion carries 500. Which brings us to Communications F. This is a resolution adopted March 22nd by the Exeter West Greenwich School Committee in opposition to proposed mandatory binding arbitration. Legislation is received, placed on file, and the Town Council further directs.
We discussed this also at the work session and decided to place this on file in lieu of the next item, I.
We have a motion. Do we have a second?
Second.
We have a motion in a second. Ready to vote? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed. Abstention. Motion carries 500. Which brings us to G. A communication received April 6, 2011, from Councilman James O'Neill proposing adoption of a resolution regarding the purchase of Rhode Island-based agricultural products by state and municipal agencies is received, placed on file, and the Town Council further directs. Jim?
Well, I think we've been surrounding this issue for quite a while, but according to all the economic studies in Rhode Island, agricultural growth in the last 10 years has outpaced every other industry in our state. And my concern was here with the University of, excuse me, University of Rhode Island and/or other state and municipal or school agencies and authorities that we do not have a procurement method to enable us to enhance local industry, specifically with Rhodey Fresh Milk here. I do understand that the state of Rhode Island and their efforts to save money through the Department of Administration, who we need to contact here, obviously has to do kind of multiple and huge purchase orders for best price. But when you consider the fact that not only saving some farmland, putting some people to work, and encouraging fresh agricultural products, in this case, more specifically Rhodey Fresh Milk, I think does long-term wonders for our community and Rhode Island. So we spoke in the work session. Ella, you've helped put together this with a number of new wherethes here. I'm pleased with all of them. The reason I want to move forward on this right away is because the state, obviously, is in the middle of their budget activities, and we need to find a way to allow either the university or the university through the Department of Administration, and maybe school departments, et cetera, to be able to somehow or another work with them to be able to purchase this fine product. So maybe you might add on here with what you've added for amendments to add to my original resolution.
That would be great, Jim. I also had a conversation today with Jim Hines, who is affiliated with Rhodey Fresh, and he stated that currently there are 147 locations that do sell Rhodey Fresh. And if we can bring on possibly URI, some of the school departments, there is definitely possibly four to eight other dairy farms that will come on board, which will help economic development here for our farmers. So I think it's a great piece of legislation, and we'll see where it takes it. Okay?
I was going to add to that also, just reading an article a year ago, when Roger Williams University paraded a few of our finest Holsteins across their quadrangle. At that time, Roger Williams entered into a contract with the co-op to purchase milk, and that university alone added more than 10% to their total revenue and volume. And so it gives you an idea of what the University of Rhode Island could mean in that particular product area, let alone if we get into other agricultural products.
That'd be great. So do we have a motion?
I move that we...
Sorry. Polly has a question.
I do have a question because I was not at the work session. If this is going to encourage the university to buy Rhodey Fresh?
Yes.
What it is going to do, it's hopefully going to create a piece of legislation so that when the bid is written, right now, I believe, the bid is written so that it's cheese, milk, it's other dairy products. And Rhodey Fresh does not do other dairy products. They're basically milk, half and half, low-fat milk, so on and so forth. So it'd be a different rewrite of the PO to allow Rhodey Fresh to be competitive. So that's what we're looking for. And what I'm going to do is combine the wherethes that I brought to the table tonight with Jim's, and then add... Jim's and then add the, be it resolved, we're going to do the governor's office, Department of Administration, URI, and South Kingstown Schools, possibly the South Kingstown School Committee can be forwarded to the schools. Okay? So, I think that we're all in agreement with that?
So, I move that we support Jim's resolution as written with the amendments written and presented by President Whaley and that the resolution be passed and forwarded to the General Assembly, the Department of Administration, with the governor's office, URI, and the South Kingstown School Committee.
Second.
We have a motion in a second, further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, abstention, motion carries five zero zero. Next item on the agenda is aye. It is a resolution adopted April fifth, two thousand eleven by the Foster Gloucester Regional School Committee in opposition to General Assembly Bills two, two thousand eleven, Senate Bill four thirteen in two thousand eleven, House five nine four three, an act relating to labor and labor relations, certified school teachers arbitration that would provide for mandatory continuation of an existing teacher contract. This is the evergreen legislation is received, placed on file, and the town council further directs.
After discussion at the work session, I move that we endorse this resolution as, as written by the Foster Gloucester Regional School Committee.
Second.
We have a motion in a second, further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, abstention, motion carries five zero zero. We have comments from interested citizens at this time, if anybody would like to come to the microphone with any comments from interested citizens. Mr. Traeger, welcome.
Well, I was hoping somebody else would come up, but I'm not, I don't have anything prepared, I just wanted to say hello. Haven't been around for a while, got up skiing in the mountains, listening to Vermont and New Hampshire news mostly, but a lot of national news too. And you already know how I feel about a few things, but I would say that in the last three months, things haven't got any better in the world, in the state probably, and the nation. We got big problems ahead of us and I hope we all survive. Not so much that we will survive because we're seventies, some of us, but we'll be all right. But I don't know about going back a few, going back about twenty years, my, my kids and their kids, they'll survive, but I don't think it's going to be very good if they get some of the things that are being proposed right now. I'll try to be prepared next time I come. I'll give you five minutes.
Thank you, Bobby.
But, you know, Bob is a sign of spring.
To me, it's a sign of summer because I see him at the beach. Any further comments from our audience?
Hold on, if I may.
Jim?
Yeah, I wanted to, Ray Nicolson put together a memo on our Mattoonik shoreline issues with our meeting with Coastal Resources. And as always, Ray does great work here. I wanted him on this little memo that he sent out on page two, number seven. Whoop, is Ray here? Is he still here? Is he gone? Gone. Okay. Steve, maybe you could take a note here. Number seven here just mentioned CRM C staff will assess and document their concerns that allowing construction of interim slash, slash, emergency hard shoreline protection measures, i.e. wood bulkheads. Steel bulkheads were also mentioned. I think that should be multiple, if you will, sources of bulkheads. This was dated, I'm sorry, this is letter L three thirty-one package.
We went back and looked at the verbatims and the memo that Ray prepared from the March thirty-first goes specifically based on what was said by Mike Decoy and Ella when she summed up the council's position. The coastal staff indicated that they were prepared to review wooden structures. There was also talk of steel structures, but the only thing that was conceded by staff was that they were looking at the wooden structures. I think that that is going to change because at least one of the property owners will be submitting, if not today, tomorrow, of an application request for a steel structure, for a bulkhead. So, that issue is going to be front and center. But as far as what the staff was to look at, it was to look at what was termed a temporary bulkhead of a wooden structure rather than the staff considered a steel structure with riprap as being a permanent structural change. So, I think some of it may be more semantics, but the issue is still well alive because at least one of the applicants will be looking for relief from the coastal council for the installation of a steel structure.
All right, thank you.
Thank you. I just have two comments here. The town council has been invited to an Eagle Court of Honor. We have troop forty-four in Mattoonik and the time is ten o'clock on Saturday, April thirtieth. And the four Eagle Scouts are William Law, Zachary DeLuca, Andrew Chin, and Nicholas Mian. So, I just wanted to make note, the Eagle Court of Honor, all town council members are welcome. And we have proclamations for these fine young men. And then the second thing that I have placed at the request of Ruth Galucci, who is our preschool coordinator here in South Kingstown Public Schools in N A E Y C, that is the National Association of Education for Young Children. Kathy and I attended their celebration on Saturday morning. It was quite hotwarming. And this N A E Y C is a real feat for a lot of our preschools in the area that have received it. It's based on ten key areas such as relationships and curriculum for the children, teaching and the assessment of the child's progress, health, teachers, families, community relations, physical environment, and leadership and management. It's no easy task to receive. So, on Saturday morning, there was a parade of many, many youngsters, it was delightful. And represented was Child Development Center from URI, the Hazard Skip Program, Head Start, Joyful Learning, A Place to Grow, Growing Children, and First Step. And the two people that coordinated this were Sue Warford from the Child Development Center and Ruth Galucci, along with all the other preschool coordinators. So, I don't know if you want to say anymore, Kathy, it was delightful.
No, it was very, very nice and the kids are, they didn't go into the streets, they followed the rules and it was probably a good amount of kids, probably a hundred kids there. So, very, very nice and hats off to Ruth for putting that together. She does a lot of great work for the town of South Kingstown.
And Sue, Sue Warford.
And Sue, I, I know who's very...
Yeah, so they started with a parade and what I left with is when you want to see many smiles on many faces, definitely have many children around because that's really what we saw. The kids did a lot of dancing and singing, so it was delightful. So, further comments from interested citizens? Next item on the agenda is Town Manager's Report.
Just two items to report on. One is that in accord with the town charter, two budget hearings are scheduled for this week on both Wednesday and Thursday evening here in council chambers. The council will be reviewing the preliminary budget that was adopted late last month. The school committee will be in session with the council for those two hearings. Those public hearings begin at seven o'clock. So, it's a seven o'clock meeting both Wednesday and Thursday night for review of the municipal and school budgets. The only other open item I have is the memorandum that was provided through the town clerk relative to whether council wants to establish a, an operating procedure for addressing Class A liquor license potential. That, that yet to be determined by the council. Other than that, I think we discussed each of the items on the report in the pre-session. If council has any questions, be glad to address them at this time.
Any questions here at the table?
Did we decide to delay the Class A license conversation till the next meeting? Or we have a sense that maybe Steve could move forward with some language here to prevent, at the moment, I don't mean prevent, but at least, yes, delay or put off having a fifth Class A liquor store here in the South Kingstown.
If you want to have that discussion this evening, you can have discussion. You have to vote to add that to your agenda. You can have discussion, but of course, you can't take any votes. So, just to...
Steve, how soon? You, you need direction to place it on the next agenda, that's...
Well, really, it's, it's up to the council. It's, what our suggestion at the staff level has been is for the council to recognize that there is the potential for adding a fifth Class A license. If the council is predisposed to agree to consider applications, you should put a, a policy in place that identifies when people need to have special use permits in place, when they have to have the applications filed so that they can be ordered advertised for a public hearing where you would most likely, in an orderly fashion, be able to consider all of those simultaneously. If the council's not interested in expanding the number of licenses from four to five, then it would probably also be appropriate for the council to so advise the public so that we do not have individuals coming forward with legal counsel seeking special use permits on a license that is not going to be expanded upon during this, this license year. So, our question at a staff level, because we're fielding a number of questions from persons interested in obtaining that Class A license if it were made available, is to determine whether or not it would be made available and if it is, that we think that you should set a, a procedure in place and a process that would provide dates as to when certain requirements had to be met so that you would have all of the applications to be considered at one evening.
Okay.
I mean, if you want to consider that, you can provide background to us. What we would suggest is that you give us direction, which direction you want to go in, we'll draft a procedure for you so that it could be considered at the next council meeting as a new business item.
Right. What, what I would prefer, go ahead, Mike, I'm sorry.
I'm sorry, Ella, at this point, we're having a discussion about something substantive that is not on the agenda.
Right.
So, what I, we can have this discussion. I just need someone to make, make a motion to add discussion of a fifth Class A license to the town's licenses. Second it, if there's a majority, we can then continue this discussion right now.
I, I would prefer to have it officially on the agenda for the next meeting. Is that possible, Steve?
Okay, but I guess what I'm, what I'm questioning is what do you want me to have on the agenda for consideration? If you want, I'll draft it, I'll draft two separate resolutions, one not expanding the licenses and two providing a procedure, and you can vote one up and vote one down.
I think Mike just wants to... There are a lot of people here who are extremely interested and I am going to insist that someone either make a motion to add this to the agenda.
I make a motion to add this conversation to the agenda.
I second it.
Thank you.
Well, now vote.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed, abstention, so motion carries.
Discuss all you want.
Thank you.
With all due respect to the solicitor, this is the Town Manager's Report. The item is in the Town Manager's Report and is a part of the record of this meeting.
All right, so we have it both ways.
All right, I happen to know there are a whole number of people sitting in the audience who are very interested in this item, who...
So, you know more than I know. I know one. Well, what is the pleasure of the council? I mean, you know, my, my take is, you know, the location if we do grant a fifth. So, I don't know how other people feel.
I agree with you. I mean, I think we have to look into it, but maybe we could just put it all on for the next agenda. That, that's, would seem logical to me. And you present both sides.
Both sides is always good.
So, I don't, I don't hear a strong...
Just to clarify though, only CD and CH, Commercial Highways, that's the only place Class A license can be held.
That's correct.
And special management district.
Special, it would be the special management district.
And the special.
Both one oh eight and the South County Commons and the two zoning designations for highway or, or downtown.
Okay.
Right, so what we'll do is we'll prepare something as a new business item which would reach both ends.
Sorry to do that to you. Yeah, I, I just feel as though that there's more of a discussion needed here and more, more information, so. And I'm not hearing any definitive no's that we're not interested in adding a fifth license.
Yeah, and again, our concern is solely that we're getting the calls on how are you going to proceed, when are you going to proceed, what do we need to do? And we don't want to give people the wrong information.
Right.
I was going to say, when the census article hit the newspaper, the number of calls were just incredible, incredible. And, and Michael, you can reiterate to everyone at home that it is this town and this council's prerogative whether or not to, we're not required...
That's correct. Although your population has increased to the point that you could establish a fifth license, it is absolutely your prerogative as to whether or not you wish to change your ordinance to provide for that fifth license.
Steve, did you want to add anything? So, when you get more phone calls, hows and wends, we will...
Wait two weeks.
We'll field the questions for another two weeks.
Thank you. Town Solicitors Report?
I think I've said enough.
Any questions? Okay. Appointments? We talked at the March twenty-fifth meeting that some of the appointments for the zoning board would take place at the last meeting in April, and that word is out in the public, so I'd like to adhere to that.
Because Polly wasn't here, if I might, might add. And Polly did make it to the meeting tonight, but since, I guess, you've called some of the zoning board people to let them know that we won't be voting till the twenty-fifth, I guess we'll adhere to that.
Um, let me just clarify, yeah, some people...
An appointment will be coming.
Some people called me, Kath, so, um, requesting that, you know, because they heard that we stayed at the meeting that we're going to take that vote on April twenty-fifth. So, that was, so I just feel as though because that was stated here at the meeting, I think we should adhere to that, in case anyone would like to attend.
I just can't wait for it. I've been waiting for it for, well, I guess, two months when it comes to, so it'll be interesting to see.
April twenty-fifth, we're definitely going to vote on that.
Yes, it will be interesting.
Which brings us to new business item A. This is a resolution adopting the town beach policy for the two thousand eleven season as shown on exhibit two attached here too, and amending the town's schedule of fees as further described in a memorandum from the Director of Leisure Services to the Town Manager dated April first, two thousand eleven, and entitled, Two Thousand Eleven Town Beach Policy Fee Schedule. Steve?
Just as Bob Traeger being back means it's spring, the approval of beach fees is also an indication that spring is here. For the record, we have not increased the beach fees for the last three years. In fact, going back to the year two thousand, two thousand to two thousand and four, for five years, the fees were set at thirty-five dollars. From two thousand and five through two thousand and eight, they went to thirty-eight dollars. And in two thousand nine and two thousand and ten, and hopefully two thousand eleven, they will stay at the forty-dollar level. So, over a twelve-year period, you've had a five-dollar increase. I would also note that the cost of operating the beach in the eleven-twelve budget is approximately ninety-two thousand dollars. Anticipated revenues from the beach program itself are approximately eighty-seven thousand dollars. So, we're, we're still looking at a property tax component of about five thousand dollars to support the beach operation. That does not include the cost associated with capital improvements that are necessary at the facility as we go forward. at the facility as we go forward. The fees are, as I say, the same as what they had been. We're expecting about 1,200 daily passes to be issued at $10. We're looking at 2,000 non-residents that would use it at $15. We're looking at the resident season pass at the $40 for about $650 if last year is indicative of what we'll see next year. And we're also looking at cottage passes at $150 with about 43 units that'll be sold. So the overall value is around 84 to $87,000 that'll come in through that fee structure if approved by the council.
Thank you. Any questions here?
I'll make a motion to approve new business item A.
We have one question here.
Oh, sorry.
Jim?
Yes, Steve, that's really good news. If we keep it up, maybe we'll get everyone that was planning on going to Scarborough or East Mattoonick. Maybe help our local businesses, but that's most appreciative, and hopefully, the governor might get the message of how important water, ocean, boating, restaurants, and our small businesses are mean to us, and I think he needs to pay attention. Anyway, thank you for holding the line on that.
Anybody else?
I'll be further discussion, Kath?
Approve new business item A?
Second.
Motion to second. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, abstention, motion carries 5-0-0. Which brings us to new business item F. This is a resolution authorizing an award of bid to Paul Massey Chevrolet, 399 Main Street, Wakefield, Rhode Island, for the purchase of one 2011 9500 G V W pickup truck with snowplow and hydraulic lift gate in accordance with all bid specifications and amount not to exceed $27,770, including trade-in, and is further described in a memorandum from the Director of Leisure Services to the Town Manager dated April 4th, 2011, and entitled "Bid Recommendation 9500 G V W Pickup Truck and Snowplow." Steve?
Recommendation is to award to the low bid, Paul Massey.
Do we have a motion?
And approve new business item F? Second.
We have a motion to second. Any discussion? Jim?
Yeah, this is good news, he being my neighbor, and he's been a great neighbor and runs an incredible operation, probably one of the cleanest I've ever seen in the business, and a lot of good people, so this is good news that one of our local businesses is...
And we were certainly happy to see that bid.
That's great, good, thank you.
Thrilled as well. Okay, we have a motion to second. Are we ready to vote? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, abstention, motion carries 5-0-0. New business item G. This is a resolution authorizing award of bid to Darlene Simis, 397 Willard Avenue, Wakefield, Rhode Island, for the operation of concessions at Old Mountain Field, Broadrock Playfields, and West Kingston Park for the 2011 season in accordance with bid specifications in the amount of $1,800, and is further described in a memorandum from the Director of Leisure Services to the Town Manager dated April 4th, 2011, and entitled "Recommendation for Bid Award Concessions Operation."
Recommendation is to award to the sole bidder that submitted on this proposal for the $1,800. I would note for the record that the Simis took over the operation of the concessions last year. It had been awarded to Welcome Market. Due to illness, that proprietor was not able to continue to provide the service. She accepted the responsibilities, including the bid prices that he had submitted, which were considerably higher than what she's finding is a market. That's why there's been the reduction in the fees. I'd also note for the record that I will be reducing the outstanding liability for the current year by approximately $1,400 in working with her to be able to provide for a viable concession stamp for those three locations that are listed here.
Thank you. Do we have a motion? And then we'll have a discussion.
So moved.
Second.
We have a motion to second. Any discussion?
Well, I just wanted to thank Darlene for stepping to the plate last year, and awfully important. Really can't thank her enough, and I think Steve's been very fair with the pricing of that.
That's great. Further discussion?
She does a good job. She definitely does.
Ready to vote? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, abstention, motion carries 5-0-0. New business item H. A resolution authorizing the temporary use of the open space parcel at Bayfield Farm by Moonrise Kingdom LLC for the filming of the movie Moonrise Kingdom. Said property owned by the South Kingston Land Trust is identified as Cessars Platt 76-2, Lot 10, and subject to a conservation easement to the Town of South Kingston Ian Coastal Resources Management Council, and is further described in a letter from Council Vice President Carol Hagan Mackenty dated April 6th, 2011, and entitled "New Business Item Filming at Bayfield Farm." Okay, welcome.
Thank you.
Steve, did you want to say anything before? Nope? Okay.
Thank you, Madam President, and members of the town council. My name is Joseph D'Angelo. I'm an attorney, and I'm pleased this evening to represent Moonrise LLC, which is the studio that proposes to do some filming in and around various cities and towns in Rhode Island, and specifically, and importantly, desires to film at Bayfield Farm, which is subject to a conservation easement. Essentially, there are three parties to that conservation easement. There's the owner of the property, the land trust, and I believe we have representatives of the land trust here this evening, and they have indicated their approval of this filming. CRMC and the Town of South Kingston are both beneficiaries of the conservation easement, and Mr. Walsh, who I'll introduce shortly, has had conversations today with Mr. Fugate at CRMC, and he expects a letter of approval from CRMC to be issued tomorrow. I also have had conversations with Mr. Goldman, the legal counsel for CRMC, and we are very confident that that particular agency and one of the beneficiaries of the conservation easement will have no objection, which leaves us here this evening seeking the permission of the other beneficiary, the Town of South Kingston. With me this evening is Mr. Colin Walsh. He is in charge of production. I don't think anything I would say this evening you haven't heard already, because this apparently is an issue that has been receiving some talk in the Town of South Kingston over the course of the last week or so, and many of you may have already met Mr. Walsh, because I believe his presence is being made known in the town. So I'd like to ask him to come forward to the microphone and specifically set forth what Moonrise LLC proposes to do, how long it will take, and what effect it will have upon the area at the conservation area. So, Mr. Walsh, if you would. Would you please identify yourself?
Yes, Colin Walsh, Location Manager, Moonrise LLC.
Colin, would you specifically tell the members of the council what purpose Moonrise LLC desires to utilize Bayfield Farm?
We're hoping to use the farm to set up a sort of a temporary Boy Scout camp. Our proposal has slightly changed since the last time. It's been simplified, sort of for a variety of reasons, but we're looking to really, in two different sections of the farm, set up a few tents and some fencing in front of the tents. The tree fort that was described in our original proposal, we cannot do there for a variety of reasons, so that's been eliminated. It's really some signage, some fencing, and a few tents that we're constructing out of sort of sticks and canvas. They're supposed to be period 1965 tents, so it's a pretty simple, unintrusive use of the farm.
And Colin, would you indicate to the members of the council why this particular site is so important to the studio?
I have no idea. That's really a question for the director, but in trying to find other places that have the same elements that this farm has, it's been very difficult. To find something with the juniper trees, the rocks, that isn't completely sort of farmed, and is also open space for us to film, it's a pretty unique property for those of you that know it, and finding something else that works has been extremely difficult, and our director has been there a couple of times and is very taken with this specific piece of property.
And when will this take place if approval is granted, and how long will it take?
If approval's granted, we're looking to set it up the first week of May, shoot the 9th, 10th, and 11th of May, and then it'll take us a couple of days to get out of there. And, you know, the setup will take a few days, because we won't be bringing any vehicles on the property. We'll carry in all the items off the street, and we'll do the same on the way out.
And following the completion of the shooting, the property will be restored fully and completely in accordance with your agreement with the land trust?
Absolutely. The agreement states that we'll put everything back the way it was initially, and we don't see any problems with that at all.
Obviously, Madam President, if any members of the council have any questions, we'll be happy to try to answer them for you. I know that Mr. Feinberg is here from the State Film Commission, and he has asked for the opportunity to say a few words to the members of the council.
Good evening, Madam President, Vice President, council members. My name's Stephen Feinberg. I'm the Executive Director of the Rhode Island Film and Television Office. We've worked very hard to bring this production here. We had many other states that were competing for this particular production. This is an Academy-nominated director. The talent attached are Academy Award winners, high-profile actors whom have taken a, let's just say, they're not getting their big star paydays to work with this particular director because he is known as an actor's director. The project itself is whimsical, nostalgic. It's something you'd be very, very proud of. Of all the scripts that I've read, and I've read thousands of scripts in my time, this is one of the best scripts I've ever read. So it's something that the state of Rhode Island, the Rhode Island Film and TV Office, has been working very hard to bring to Rhode Island, and we're really happy to have it here, and we would love this production to be a part of the Town of South Kingston, Kingston. So I hope that you welcome the project here, and the folks who are working on this project are very sensitive to making sure that a place is left, not only in the shape that it was when they first received it, but hopefully into a better shape and something that, again, you'll be very happy with.
Thank you.
As I mentioned, there are representatives of the land trust here. I'm not sure they need to say anything, but I can indicate that an agreement has been reached between the land trust, the owner of the property, and the studio. So we're here to answer any questions that any members of the council may have, and we respectfully ask your consideration of this use of the property for a very short period of time.
Thank you. Carol?
I have a few questions. I think Colin, or maybe you, Joe, could answer this. Can you explain to the council and the public what kind of money you've budgeted for this one-week allotment of time in South Kingston from the film?
I believe the total impact will be, for the three days of filming, over $50,000. That includes site rental fees and all sorts of other fees that we pay to be in any place, from hiring local police officers to renting out parking lots, and then having the 40-plus crew members working in the town for over a week. There's a lot of restaurants, hotels, other expenses that will end up in South Kingston's economic activity.
And I think it would be, help us all here, if we could hear from the land trust as to what the agreement was between the land trust and the studio.
Mike Sherry, South Kingston Land Trust. We have an agreement, the financial side, which is the three days of filming, $20,000, and there's provisions if the filming has to go on for additional days. The site, just so that people know what it is, is essentially a grassy, rocky hillside full of cow manure, so they don't have to put the cow manure back when they're done. But if they want to, that's up to them. So $20,000 for three days is the financial benefit we expect to see.
And you're satisfied, Mr. Sherry, that there'd be no impact to the land from this filming use?
I don't see any impact whatsoever. I spend a lot of time on that farm. I actually own a piece of that farm as well, and I've been out there. We've identified the locations, pitching a few pup tents, and putting a couple of stakes in the ground is not going to be anything compared to the cow ruts that are through there, because there's a lot of cow paths, so you'll never know they were there.
And can you describe approximately how much of the land that the studio will be using?
There's one hillside across from the We farm that looks to me to be on the order of a quarter to a half an acre was the site that we first looked at.
And what about the cows? Are they going to be relocated to a different pasture within the same area, or?
Spud had told me, Spud Mac had told me, there's one randy bull out there he'll have to put on the other side at Richie Cranston's farm, but the other cows, they can be moved into the other pasture. We may have to string a wire, which Spud said he would do, a hot wire to keep them in the other paddock.
Further questions here at the table? I just had a few questions. In order to, you know, follow the conservation easement, is there anything that can be assured from the town council that maybe the land would be left better than it is with some of those holes that have been created?
I don't expect there to be any holes other than a small stake in the ground, which there are survey stakes out there now, there are perk pipes out there now, which are bigger holes than we would expect. Again, it's a rocky pasture. There's lots of ruts from the cows that go through there. I don't know how you'd leave it better. We could, you know, put a little earth into the hole there, a little manure into the hole, and maybe put some grass seed down, wild grass seed. But again, if you guys have the opportunity to take a drive down, not get around, but Camp Fuller Road, take a look at, and you'll see, it's a pasture, and it's cows, and it's cow manure, and it's pretty hard to make it worse and pretty hard to make it better.
I know that if it is the scene of a Boy Scout, that is the philosophy of the Boy Scouts, to leave it better than what you found it. So if some of those cow ruts could be improved, the Boy Scouts would be thrilled.
Oh, I like that.
We could work on that, but the cows, within a few days, they'll have it back.
Cows don't care, I know. Is there anything, any other possibilities that, you know, you could enhance some of the agriculture, such as, you know, maybe buying some feed with some of the money to enhance agricultural? You know, is there anything that we can?
One of the things the land trust does is that, the Cozy Farm with the Bayfield Farm, we have an agreement with Spud Mac. Spud had an agreement with the Cozy family, Helen Lynch, that he'd have lifetime use of that property to graze his cattle. We've worked with him on that, and we can continue to work. We can maybe incentivize. I offered, from the land trust perspective, to do any additional wire fencing that might need to be done to cordon off the area temporarily, so we are working with Spud to maybe enhance it a bit, if that's the term for it, by some more electric fencing and that sort of thing.
And arrangements have been made for parking off the site, isn't that correct?
Yes, no, all arrangements are made for parking off-site and catering off-site and everything else. We are going to try to use local vendors for the catering when we're here, Mattoonick Oyster Bar and some of the local farms for beef and whatnot.
I think that's a must.
Yep, so we have a local Rhode Island caterer who's going to be shopping around down here when we're down here, so. But all arrangements are made for everything off-site, so we'll just load in off the street, and it will be a pretty simple thing, and the crew is about probably 40 people, including actors and everything.
And Colin, did you say you spoke to CRMC? Was it today?
I have spoken to CRMC. Grober Fugate was supposed to have a letter to me today of permission. He emailed me at the end of the day, and I have a copy of the email, if anybody's interested, indicating there were some holdups at his office, and he'd have the letter to me first thing in the morning. So unfortunately, I don't have it right now, but I do have an email from him indicating that I will have the letter of permission tomorrow.
So his permission, you said, letter of permission?
Yes.
One thing I might like to add, George Whaley has been accommodating. He'll let anything go on on his property that abuts, that we might want to do. Also, Rocky Meadows Farm, which abuts, they've agreed to host whatever we could do at their property as well. And also Richie Cranston, who is also on Camp Fuller Road, has agreed to participate.
Further comments here at the table? Kathy?
I have a couple of comments, but first I want to, in questions, refer to our town solicitor, Mike Acillo, and that's why I opened up the closed executive session meetings. And Mike, I'd like you to discuss what we talked about at the executive session and your beliefs on this, and also your conversation that it ends that you were talking to Mr. Awkerman, and myself and Carol were supposed to talk to Mr. Awkerman, so I want to comment on that, too.
Sure. The issue that we discussed really involved a threshold issue of whether or not... not filming as an activity would be something that would be consistent with the conservation easement, and the way that conservation easement was so very tightly written. I don't think, in terms of our discussion, I think everyone agreed that the actual use was not going to have an adverse impact on the land itself, that it would probably not have much of an impact. The real issue was, would this set a precedent? How do we get through that threshold issue of filming is not an agricultural use? And the thought was that I, as solicitor, should go back to the attorney for the land trust, who is Jim Aukerman, and see whether or not we could come up with a way to legally come up with an opinion that might get us through that threshold issue. So I did have that conversation with Jim, and I did provide a memo to you regarding the outcome of that conversation, that we were not able to come up with a way to get through that threshold issue, which is why I gave you my opinion, which is that although the use is certainly one that is not going to adversely impact the land, we need to be careful about not only this, because of filming not being an agricultural use, but where do we go from here with any future situations where you're confronted with this issue? So needless to say, I'm also, the public memo that Mr. De Angelis prepared, I'm very familiar with the arguments in there. There are a lot of able attorneys in the room, and, you know, there's the old joke, you put more than one attorney in a room, and there are going to be more than one opinion. But I haven't changed my opinion, but, so that's still where I'm at on it.
And I want to confer that I spoke with Mr. Aukerman that day after, probably about 4:45 in the afternoon. He had spoken to Mike, and he said that, he agreed after reading it and talking to Mike, that he really, his quote, "He really painted himself into a corner with this." That's the, Jim Aukerman, the lawyer for the South Kingstown Land Trust, who wrote that article back in 1999, that conservation easement, said that he backed his way into the corner, that he really wanted to have this done. And I said, "I agree with you, Jim." I said, "It would be a great thing for the town of South Kingstown, could we look for another piece of land?" The town has said that they will help find something else, but this is a conservation easement. And I said, "I'm concerned about how this looks for the South Kingstown Land Trust, that you're violating a conservation easement." And just to turn your head, or ask us to turn our head, they should have stopped, I believe, at the land trust doorstep, and they should have said, "No, because it's a conservation easement on that property." Some people might say, "What's the big deal?" The big deal is that this can open up Pandora's Box, and that's what I said to Jim Aukerman. I said, "I'm afraid about where this is going to lead, what properties we've had in the past, that people don't think that they got paid enough for, or could we have weddings in this? It could really open up an issue." And that is my biggest concern, and my concern is for the land trust. And Jim thanked me for my concern for the land trust and how this might be viewed. Because now, going back to past elections, this past election, people were truly questioning why we were saving open space. And we've done a lot of that. And to go back and give you a history, when I first ran back in 2002, that fall, Joanne Richitelli, who has done a wonderful job for the land trust, I like her very much. I've seen her work diligently to get federal monies from here and there, to buy some of the lands that we've approved as a council over the past nine years. She wanted to talk with all the council members, or all people who are running, on their positions for open space and the land trust. I had a very nice conversation. I said, you know, "I truly believe, you know, preserving the land, preserving the beauty, and the character of the town of South Kingstown is something that I fully support," because I think she believed that I didn't believe that. And I've been nothing but 100% behind the South Kingstown Land Trust until, really, two weeks ago, when this came up. So, again, nothing against Joanne, but just to give you the history of what we did, why we buy this land and defend it. But when you have taxpayers paying money for open space on bonds, they're protecting the land, they're not using their tax dollars to promote movies on these properties. And that is where my concern is, because I think this would be an abuse of the taxpayers' dollar. And I also believe that this will set up a precedence for federal money to come our way, again, to maybe buy another parcel of land. Again, we are a little over 30%. And my concern is that we might not get it, because this might be viewed as a violation, and somebody else could easily get the money. So to me, it was $5,000, as land trust was going to get two weeks ago. Now, tonight, it's $20,000. Excuse me, I have a cold. Is $20,000 really worth, the federal money that we've received over all these years to protect all that land? I'm just trying to rattle off in my head. I think there's nine pieces of land that I could think of off the top of my head that I've protected in the past nine years. And I'm here to fight for the taxpayer, and I'm here to fight for that land. And people might say, "Just have a movie. Just let it all happen. It's a conservation easement." That is extremely important. People have come up to me who saw this in the paper, who knew, some prominent people in this town, who were just aghast that we would even think about violating a conservation easement. So it might sound all nice, nice, and that you're going to come and spend the money. I'd love you to spend the money. I'm not against the movie being here. I just wish you would find a piece of land that we could do it on, and not violate a conservation easement. That is my biggest concern. My other question is that I just want to know that this, your Adler, Pollock, and Sheehan came to the town council via the Mcatee and Mcatee Attorney Law Firm paper, and Carol wrote here that a memorandum was sent to me from the law office of Adler, Pollock, and Sheehan for distribution to all town council members. I don't know if, why it didn't come directly to the town hall, to the town manager's office, it would have been put into our package. That, I just, I have a question regarding...
This was an internal memorandum that was requested by our client when this issue first arose approximately 10 days ago. As you can see, it was a memorandum directed to my partner, Richard Beretta, and myself. And I shared it with the member of the council, with the understanding that she was going to present it to the other members of the council.
You could always present it, bring it to town hall. That just makes me, I was just a little, really, that was a very interesting...
I think I have the right to be heard at this point, and I take offense at your comment, Kathy.
Well, I just was asking him a question. Why would it go through your attorney's office to come to the town council? I think that's a very legitimate question.
Because I put the new business item on the agenda. It came to me before I could even get on the new business item agenda. I'm the one who asked for it to be put on. I called you, Steve. I told you I had the memo. I wanted it on for, let's be very clear, I wanted it on for tonight, to put this issue to bed, one way or the other. And I think I said that to you, Joe. I've had calls from Colin. I've spoken to you several times. We had the meeting two weeks ago, with the land trust was here. And all I did was say, "Let's put it on the agenda. Win, lose, or draw, it gets done tonight." And that's the conversation we had. He sent it to me. I asked for new business item. I quickly sent it to Steve, and I believe, Joe, you sent it to Mr. Osillo, and the memo got, you know...
Beth Newland, I think, may have discussed it with Mr. Osillo. I did not discuss it with him, but Beth did.
Well, thank you for clarifying, because it is concerning when you have somebody who's so pro this item, that it came through her office. I had to ask the question. But I want to go back. I haven't finished that. I want to just quote, that the conservation easement, written by Mr. Aukerman, 3F, clearly states that, I notes here, that there is, there's no use or development of the premises, other than for agricultural purposes, shall be permitted. There's a couple of other ones that I think that, if I had my legalese, and I could write, you know, legal, you know, papers, that you could actually put that in with a conduit line, or we've talked about the operation of motorized vehicles. But, you know, we, I thought, when we had the executive session, Mike spoke with Jim Aukerman, I spoke to Jim Aukerman. I reported at the Coastal Resources, it's very funny, the Coastal Resource Management Council meeting, we had that next Tuesday night. I said to Ella, Ella, I spoke to Jim Aukerman. He said he's backed, he feels that he's backed himself in the corner on this one, painted himself into a corner. And Ella said, well, Carol was also supposed to speak with him, said, well, that's what Carol said, same thing, too. I thought this issue was done, done. So I was just surprised to see it come back up. So just pardon me that I'm surprised to see it happening. So, just to kind of give you the history of all this. So, let me just see, I might have a few more notes here. We also discussed in this thing that many times, that the town manager said that he would, he talked to Colin and the land trust about, you know, different locations. So again, my main concerns are that we're going to jeopardize any future federal funds, which for $20,000 and a movie, that might even end up, the filming might end up on the floor of a cutting room. We don't even know in the long run. And that, again, the open space money that's used for this property, I cannot support. And just the violation of 3F in that conservation easement, this shouldn't really even be in front of the council. It should have stopped at the South Kingstown Land Trust.
I'd just like, if you can just let me, Kathy, I got a phone call from Carol Hagan Mcatee, asking for this to be put on the agenda. She had a conversation with Steve, and she was going to address a letter here to the town, and I told her to address it to me as town council president. So that's why the letter is addressed, Dear President Whaley. So I just wanted to clarify that. And then I'm going to have Carol, and then Polly.
Well, where do I begin? I also spoke to Mr. Aukerman. We had several conversations. And he was very, I believe he's the one who started this whole conversation. And he admitted to me that he never anticipated a use like this, a use that would have no impact on the land, and in effect, benefit the mission of the land trust by giving it monies so that they could pursue to acquire open space, to preserve the open space they have, and to maintain and develop their mission. He felt that in the purpose section of the deed, he said it should have said, "For purposes of agricultural, agriculture and/or conservation purposes." Everywhere throughout the deed, it says both of those terms are used, except for that one, that one line in the deed. I have read your memo, Joe, and I understand where Mike Osillo is coming from. But I do, I'm going to refer to your memo right now. In Rhode Island Economic Development Corp. versus the Parking Company LP, it's a Rhode Island case, 2006, the court reasoned that an easement does not grant its holder the right to exclusive possession of the servient estate, or the right to deprive the owner of his or her beneficial interest in the land that is the subject of the easement. The owner of the land is the South Kingstown Land Trust. In so denying this request, we are denying them their beneficial interest in the land that they own. I can, I certainly agree that we should conserve open space, but I believe that this particular use, it's temporary, it's an economic stimulus for the town, and for the, it benefits the land trust. It also has literally no impact on the land, no negative impact. And it'll also showcase the beautiful open space that we have here in Rhode Island, and especially South Kingstown. And it is my feeling that if you are a film-friendly community, and not necessarily just for conservation land or land trust land, that hopefully, the studio will come back and want to refilm a different film here. And again, stimulating our economic development in this town, which is very badly needed right now, as it is in most communities. But for those reasons, and many more reasons that you've outlined in this memo, Joe, which maybe you should enumerate on in light of Mr. Osillo's opinion, and I would appreciate that at this point.
Okay.
Do you want me to, let me go to Polly first. Okay, Joe?
Yeah, thank you very much. I certainly respect the opinion of your town solicitor, and I certainly respect the opinion of Councilwoman Fogarty. I think this is a document that was written at a time when, as Mr. Aukerman said, no one could anticipate that a studio production would seek the opportunity to use this beautiful area in South Kingstown. With respect to the issue that Councilwoman Fogarty pointed out, I believe it's 3F, the document has 12 prohibitions in it. And of those 12 prohibitions, clearly 11 of them do not apply to what the studio was seeking. I certainly could make an argument that we also are not prohibited under 3F, because it is a wonderful thing and a laudatory thing to set up open space property, conservation easements, agricultural areas. But those things don't continue on indefinitely without the necessary funding. I think everybody who sits on the town council knows that the continuation of those wonderful open space ideals requires funding of some sort. This is one means and one method of obtaining some funding for the land trust to continue with the ideals of open space and agricultural uses. My client certainly cannot tell the land trust what to do with the monies they're going to receive, and maybe that's something for the town council to talk to. And maybe you don't have the right to tell them what they should do with their money. However, the point I want to make, and which we tried to articulate in our memorandum, is that this is, this is an untypical type of conservation easement. The great majority of easements that I have seen, and I've seen a lot of them, because most of them arise out of the permitting process at the Coastal Resources Management Council. What typically happens is that a property owner wants to either build a structure, or place an addition on their structure, and there's an environmental issue, sometimes a wetland, sometimes a buffer area or an area subject to erosion, and CRMC will insist that there be protections afforded for that area. So it's part of the give and take when dealing with CRMC staff, will you agree to a conservation easement to protect that wetland? And many times, the property owner decides that, yes, I will agree to that conservation easement. But that property owner is the owner of the property. He or she continues to own the property, and continues to enjoy all of the rights that are associated with being the owner of the property, with the exception of those things that are specifically prohibited in the conservation easement. This is, this is a little bit different, because you don't have a private party owning the property. You have, you have a quasi-governmental entity, the South Kingstown Land Trust, that owns the property. And our argument that we advance in this memorandum is that, is that the land trust, as the owner of the property, is entitled to that whole group of rights, that owning any piece of real estate entitled the owner to, with the exception that you don't violate what's in the easement. Now, if you want to look at this conservation easement that was drafted and executed in 1999, you certainly can find some specific terminologies and uses of terms if you want to oppose the use of this property as being proposed by the production studio. However, when you, when you look at the general broad language, and especially the purpose clause, in our opinion, and as we've, as we've stated in this memorandum, balancing that, together with the very fair compensation that will be provided to the land trust, we believe that it is permissible. We've said so in our, in this opinion that we gave to our client, which we've shared with you. So I hope I've attempted to answer the questions, but I certainly can respect the opinion of Councilwoman Fogarty and your solicitor. If you want to look at a document line by line, especially when a document could never anticipate a production studio coming into town, you can probably find some things to base your argument on. But our opinion is that, looking at the document as a whole, it is permissible. I hope I answered your questions.
Polly?
Thank you, Ella.
And it is a pleasure, Polly. I haven't seen you in about 20 years.
It's been a while.
Yes, it has.
Yeah, I do want to look at it line by line. I thought it would be interesting to go back and see, to listen to the public hearing they had on this property. And it was indeed very interesting, because, you know, we write our conservation easements very specifically for each piece of land that is going to be purchased. And so I thought there might be some good thinking, and why they, why did they have this? Because it's very clear, "No use or development of the premise, other than for agricultural purposes, shall be permitted." I wondered why they were so determined to have nothing else. And so I listened to... And so I listened to entire, this is my third public hearing tonight, because I listened to a whole other one on this land. Mike Sherry was in this, he will remember it, I'm sure. Jim Aukerman was featured in it. But probably the person I thought was the most interesting who was featured in it was Catherine Lever, who, does she still live on the road? I'm not sure. At the point in 1999 when this was being discussed, she lived in the first house on Camp Fuller Road. And she said that she was thrilled about this conservation easement, because this was really the last, and these are her, this is a quote, "This is a last piece of farmland along with the Whaley Farm and the Trust Farm that was once entirely farmland in this area." And that struck home to me, because I said, oh, that's why she wanted to preserve it. That's why they wanted to preserve this land specifically for agriculture. And as Kathy and I have been through so many of these, and Jim have been through so many of these hearings, and what we get from people in the audience is, well, what when you decide to sell the property? What are you going to do then? And we say to them, you cannot sell property that is protected with a conservation easement. It always will be in perpetuity. It's forever. And it doesn't mean that we have to spend more money on it, but we have to keep it the way it is now. And that's what we do when we sign a conservation easement. And I feel if you start letting things go, if you start letting this in or that in, although it sounds lovely and it won't hurt the land, I know that, but if you do, it makes it very difficult next time to argue with someone who says, but all I want to do is come in for two days. And I think we're going to lose our credibility if we, even for any people who are interested in leaving land to the land trust or to the town of South Kingstown. And I would not be willing to risk that. I also think that if we go and try to borrow more money with the bonds, they're going to say, well, look, you don't pay any attention to what you sign off on. No, we're not going to lend you money anymore for this. Because that's how we raised the money for the purchase. And we paid $32,545 for this. So I am not for allowing this to go forward. I cannot make, I tried, I cannot make anything in the film into agriculture. Thank you.
Jim.
I don't disagree with what anyone has said this evening. Mr. DeAngelis has presented some very good arguments, some that I may side with. Mr. Asillo has done the same. Mr. Aukerman has done the same. I try to step back and be a reasonable person here, and give this some reasonable thoughts, and look at this as a case-by-case basis. I can support a temporary waiver here of this conservation easement on behalf of the town of South Kingstown. These, what an opportunity here, you know, showcase the town, bring a few business, some business revenues into our community. Most importantly, enhance the mission of the land trust, as well as the town and the town council. Town of South Kingstown has been a great steward of land and open space protection, along with our partners, the land trust, Nature Conservancy, U.S. Fish and Wildlife, oh gosh, who else, State DEM, everyone's been wonderful here. And I wish the economy was going to be better. The economy, Washington, the State House, and up there in Providence, Smith Hill, we're warned, we're told, and it's not going to change here. Deficits are going to be coming at us. We're going to have to be leaders, leaders with some reasonable thinking. There's going to be a lot less money, not only for health care and education, but for water protection, quality, conservation, going to be a lot less money. And here's an opportunity to raise a little money for the land trust. And as Mr. DeAngelis said, this helps continue. I don't know how long we can continue with cows out there. A lot of our farmers are well up in age. We need this money to continue the kind of program that Bayfield Farm represents. And the businesses in town here, I certainly have a lot of support of them in the political world, but in the real world, everyone needs to sell a few more lunches, a few more groceries. Everyone needs some traffic. And gosh, if this is successful, just maybe, long-term, we'll see some other production companies here, maybe some other business. This is so reasonable. And I'm not disagreeing with what Kathy and Polly said. We write a tight ordinance to lend us, to make sure these properties are going to be open in perpetuity. But we also need the funding, and not just from taxpayers. And I think the opportunity here, revenues from the film company, really supports the mission of the land trust. And this is not at all taking away from South Kingstown's comprehensive plan, which, as we all know, supports smart growth, open space protection, and business opportunities. So I really believe that on any reasonable basis, this is fair. It's a case-by-case basis. I have great faith in future South Kingstown town councils, that we're not going to run amok with something that's going to be permanent, annual, that we can't make decisions, five of us, five of us in the future make reasonable decisions. But this is so reasonable, so smart, I think so wise, the negatives are just overwhelmingly just put into the distance here. So I would certainly urge my fellow council members here to support this initiative. Thank you.
Thank you. Carol.
I just wanted to say, I agree with Jim. This definitely passes the reasonable man or woman test. It's no impact, it's beneficial to the land trust. And it's still, we're not giving, this is a very temporary thing, we're not giving away any easement rights. I don't see, if you weigh the risk versus the benefits, I don't see how it would open Pandora's box. I agree with Jim again, it's a case-by-case basis. If anybody wants to, I mean, we certainly want to listen to the land trust as to what they approve or don't approve. And, you know, this isn't just the town council saying you can use it, the land trust is saying you can use it. CRMC is in agreement. This doesn't violate any of the sensitivities of the conservation people or persons involved. And I believe the benefits do pass the reasonable man's test or woman's test, and therefore I do support it. You know, further, there'll be no vehicles on the property. I mean, there's a list of things you can't do, which I know you're well aware of, that would be adverse to the conservation easement. And those, I believe, Mr. Sherry has said, that are part of the agreement, and that's certainly a big part of it.
Kathy.
It shouldn't be a litmus test. This shouldn't be a case-by-case. It is clearly a conservation easement. This shouldn't have even come to us. It should have been stopped at the beginning. I totally, totally disagree. This is not what we do here. This is, and you're talking about $20,000, when you are talking about money that could be pulled away from the Nature Conservancy, federal grants. I don't know how many other people have given us money to protect these lands. You are risking, know this, you are risking any funding for any future lands. I cannot believe, for $20,000 and a movie, that you would potentially hurt us in the long run, as far as getting funding for open space. I cannot believe, in all the years that Jim has pounded the table about open space, that you can just say, oh, well, it's a case-by-case in this item. That's, I should have asked how much money we've received, and just Jim's time on the council and Polly's time on the council, which is two years less, from all these other, from other funding sources. I just totally think it's irresponsible and unreasonable to even bring it up like this. I'm shocked, I really am shocked. And I, but I guess this goes to Mr. DeAngelis saying that he can see that, you know, there's a permitted use, and we have our solicitor, who I am standing behind 100%, because he's always led us very well, and the town of South Kingstown very well, that, I guess this is what Carol calls creative lawyering in the executive session, and how we can get around these things, creative lawyering, we kept being mentioned. So it's that way of reading the law. And I'm just absolutely floored that we are at this point. And I just, when we lose money down the road, I guess I'll have to, if this does go through, I guess I'll have to point to this is the night that, why we don't get any federal funding, or the Nature Conservancy doesn't give us any money, because it could happen, and you have to be very aware of that. So again, I've just been, I'm standing up for the land trust. I'm really the one who's saying that this shouldn't have been, this shouldn't have not have been even considered. And I guess that's all I can say, you know, it's, I also listen to the land trust, but I also listen to their lawyer, who said that he painted himself in the corner on this one. So I can't be any more clear on how against this I am.
I'm going to weigh in, and then I'm going to come to the audience, okay? My initial response, Kathy back, what was it, March 25th, whatever our last meeting was, and you were going to go speak to Mr. Aukerman, and Carol was going to go speak to Mr. Aukerman, and there was going to be possibly even a meeting. At that time, that's where I was at. I was at, this is a conservation easement, and absolutely should be protected. I've talked to many people around the town as well, and people have approached me that this is economic times, that we really need to be grasping at every opportunity that we can. So I am going to support this. I had a very difficult time. I sat on the fence for a very long time. I'm happy that Coastal Resources Management Council is going to be providing some documentation, because they are co-sponsors, co-owners of this easement. So if that does come through, I'm thrilled about that. The different people that, you know, have approached me, there is no impact on this land. If there was any kind of, you know, destruction that I thought was going to be, there's not going to be vehicles on the property. This is a change of the times. Being in the profession that I'm in, you need to change with the change of the times. This conservation easement is not going to be, you know, exploited, it's not going to be looked at as something that's permanent, it's temporary. And I think that, being in the field of education, which I'm in, you need to take it on a case-by-case basis. We don't do a one-size-fits-all program. Equality is everybody getting what they need. And looking at the needs of what, to me, the town needs, is some economic stimulus. So, you know, I am going to support this. You know, I agree with a lot of what you've said, with what, you know, Polly has said. You know, there is not, we're not, we're not going to hurt the land, and we're not going to, you know, the land is going to be kept the way that it is. So at this time, unless there's further discussion that changes my mind, I am going to support this. Kathy.
I'm shocked, but I'm not going to try to change your mind. Mike, when we lose money, I'll make sure that I remind everybody. Yeah, you'll be sure, you'll be the first. Mike, I know this is probably not, probably going to be affecting a person's vote on this council, but if somebody is up here, wife happens to sit on the South Kingstown Land Trust, like trustee, his wife is a trustee on the South Kingstown Land Trust, should he be voting on this item? I have to ask.
Yeah, no, it's fear to ask, and we voted, or the council has voted on very many
Yeah, and I should have been asking over the years.
land trust issues. And unless, the rule is, with any conflict, it has to have a financial impact directly on the individual, and I don't see that here, and I've never frankly seen it in all the other.
I didn't think so, but I just wanted to be clear that Anne O'Neill is a trustee on the South Kingstown Land Trust.
Michael, thank you for that response. And Madam President, if it helps matters, Mrs. O'Neill's term was up at the end of March. She is no longer a member of the South Kingstown Land Trust trustee. So I think that was pretty nasty from the other end of the story.
I did know, if you checked their website today, she's still on it, which I did.
All right, and we will maintain respect at this table while I'm sitting in this chair.
Try a phone call.
I didn't know I'd have to do that.
Okay, so that's been clarified. At this time, I'm going to open it to the public. I'm going to start with, Joe, I'm going to start with Bobby first, and then I'm going to go to Joe Iacquai.
Now I know why I stay. You know, I was going to leave. It's a good program on, I'm going to miss it tonight. But I'll tell you, you've got a decision to make, and I'm glad the way it's going. The decision might be 3-2. And I understand what Polly and Kathy are saying too. But as Ella brought out and Jim brought out, I'm just agreeing with both of, all of you, Carol, that, you know, we're in a world that decisions need to be made on reality. Reality is closing in on this country. I was, you know, I mean, I feel like giving a speech now, for crying out loud. Now, this is a no-brainer, okay? I mean, a couple of tent stakes, and guys are going to carry the stuff in and carry it out, and I don't even think it has anything to do with money, to be honest with you. You can talk about the $20,000 or the $50,000. The $50,000 maybe is the more important one. That's an economic boost for a few people down here, probably. But my goodness, let's get real now. And if this does affect legally or land trust money in the future, then the government's got a bigger problem than it already has, and that's a pretty big one it's got already. Believe me, it's ridiculous. Just do it. Get the movie people in here, and hopefully they'll come back, like you said. Rhode Island's great. Come on down to Skipstock, see my place. You can use it anytime you want. See it, you probably will come back.
Mr. Iacquai.
Thank you. Good evening. I'm glad I stayed too, because this is very important to South Kingstown. My name is Joe Iacquai. I'm the executive director of the South Kingstown Chamber of Commerce. And I'm excited to be here this evening to speak and support Moonrise Kingdom LLC for their proposed filming at Bayview Farm. I think their request for that three-to-five temporary days of use of this open parcel off Camp Fuller Road is kind of exciting and significant to our town during these economic, challenging times. The value of this movie and all the incentives it'll bring to our town needs not to be put aside. Our town has it all to make movie magic. We have gorgeous homes, museums, castles, parks, and our coastline. And just a couple of weeks ago, you had a packed house here talking about the coastline. And I think people know what we have here, whatever is needed, I think South Kingstown has it all. The filming industry, as was stated this evening, and our state is growing nationally. I think, I saw a website statistic today, Councilman Fogarty, relative to an 18% increase nationally of this industry that's growing. These film and TV production companies spend a lot of money in a short period of time when on location. Just like to let you know that they may need a hair salon, they may need a florist, they may need the dry cleaners, they may need a car rental, gift stores, hardware stores, equipment and party rental stores, restaurants, caterers, and maybe even a pet store. A young lady was here earlier this evening. During these challenging economic times, our state, and I like to say this, it's becoming a Hollywood of the East Coast, and I think you'll agree with me, that has been successful going this way with our economic development through the EDC in our state of Rhode Island. So let's be thankful and happy we have a proposal coming to our town. So, let's be thankful and happy we have a proposal coming to our town with no negative impact. Thanks to the mobility of the film producers and making our town part of this new movie, let's accept the deal, move forward, enjoy the, seeing our community on a movie. As many a people have come to me just recently and said, you know, someday it's great to see our town in a movie. And we have a chance to do that with this proposal. We may see a celebrity shopping local, shopping and enjoying a cup of coffee at a local business in the next few weeks. We are thrilled to be working with this group to increase local opportunities for the good of our town. And we can't wait for the promotional and financial gain from their presence, Colin. I, I enjoy saying that because this community needs the economic development. And on behalf of our Board of Directors, and I'll say this in front of the council and staff, our Board of Directors and our staff, we want to welcome Mr. Walsh and his staff to our town. We're here to help you. Maybe we can see you come back, even if it's on a case-by-case basis. And we'll work to bring business into our town, and this is one great leap for 2011 for our town. And it's a win-win and it's got some great economic impact. Thank you for allowing me to speak. And good luck.
Thank you. Further comments from the public? Any further comments here at the table? Kathy?
I think we're kidding around when we were talking about that in the executive session.
I'm not sure I, I quite understand the question. Is what a violation? What would what be a violation? Yeah, I, I don't, I actually don't know the answer. See, for me, the issue was the threshold, the issue is whether filming was an agricultural use. Everything after that is, it really doesn't matter at that point.
Ella, seeing then no further questions, I would like to move approval of this-
I, I'd just like to make one statement before we do that.
I'm sorry, I thought you were-
No, I just, I just want to put one more thought out there before we take the vote. In talking to some of the people involved with agriculture at a higher level than we're at, I do believe that there's a Right to Farm Act, which does look at different aspects of agriculture. Some things have been added such as agriculture tourism. And just one last thought, being in the area of fine arts, is there any way that you can really look at this filming as showcasing the agricultural beauty of South Kingston? So that maybe a little piece, you know, could be looked at as agricultural. It really is showcasing the beauty that we have here in South Kingston. I know that's not going to change anybody's mind, but it's my parting thought. At that point, I will accept a motion?
I, I do agree with what you just said. And as far as I know, there are about 35 head of cattle over there and maybe, just maybe, we, some roundup, a little extra food, something we, we could do out there to please them. But I, what I wanted to mention here, Ella, I, I did want to move approval for this Resolution H, but with the proviso, of course, that Coastal Resource Management Council also is on board with this. So, that way it would complete all of the grantors, grantees, et cetera. So, that is my motion then to approve Resolution H with that proviso of Coastal Resource Management Council approving.
Okay, we have a motion with an amendment to include Coastal Resources Management Council's approval?
Second.
We have a motion and second. Further discussion? Any last comments from the public? Ready to vote? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Stention? Motion carries three, two. And can we do a roll call vote, please, Dale?
Council President Whaley?
Yes.
Council Vice President McAtee?
Yes.
Councilwoman Eddy?
Nay.
Councilwoman Fogarty?
Nay.
Councilman O'Neill?
Three, two. Three, two. Motion carries.
Thank you very much. Thank you very much. I'd like you to know that the South Kingston Land Trust Board also had a very difficult time coming to our vote. And I think in the long run, it'll be beneficial for everyone. Again, thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Which brings us to new business, item I. This is a resolution authorizing the acceptance of a 1999 Chance Trolley from the Rhode Island Public Transit Authority and authorizing the town manager to enter into a lease agreement with the South Kingston Chamber of Commerce upon which the terms and conditions of the trolley use would be negotiated and is further described in a memorandum from the Director of Administrative Services to the Town Manager dated April 7, 2011 and entitled Proposed Trolley Acquisition and Use Plan.
I've provided you with a memorandum relative to this item, just in terms of a little bit of historical perspective. Last year, when the Chamber of Commerce was looking to begin a trolley service, a free trolley service that would service both South Kingston and Narragansett, they were in search of a trolley to either lease, purchase, or to get use of. One that they thought was available was not, to their liking based on its mechanical condition. At that time, I spoke with representatives from the chamber and indicated that possibly we could give Riptor a call to determine if they had vehicles that they could either lease or vehicles that were deadlined that may be available for use for that program. Riptor at that time indicated that they did not have anything in surplus nor anything that was available for lease, but that they were interested in developing a program as they had vehicles reach their usable life for Riptor, where the vehicles would be turned over to municipalities as a means of providing for services that may not be available typically through the Riptor's service market. Joe Iacquai from the chamber has been persistent in terms of contact with Riptor and has been advised approximately a week and a half ago that Riptor was making available the first trolley and that South Kingston would be the recipient of that if South Kingston were to accept title to the, to the vehicle. Riptor was interested in being able to get the vehicle off of their property and to have title transferred to the municipality. That's why this item has appeared on the agenda. What I have asked the Chamber of Commerce to do is to provide a proposal for the town, for the town to consider a lease of the, the vehicle to the chamber where they could demonstrate that it was going to provide value and service for tourism and to augment the existing service that's being provided with the trolley loop that goes from the Holiday Inn through Narragansett and back up to the Holiday Inn through a private company. I have not yet received a specific proposal from the chamber. However, if we do not receive council authorization for us to be able to act on selection of, or purchase of that vehicle at no cost and receipt of the title, it may in fact become an item that gets provided to another community. So, I think that what, what we need to do at this point is, one, to have the council provide the manager with authorization to take receipt of the vehicle if an appropriate agreement with the Chamber of Commerce can be reached on how that vehicle would be used. With that, I'll turn it back to you. I know that Mr. Iacquai is here on behalf of the chamber.
Thank you. Any questions before Joe comes to the mic? Joe, would you like to talk to us about this?
Be glad to. Thank you. Once again, Joe Iacquai from the South Kingston Chamber of Commerce. I concur with Mr. Alfred and I also concur with the memo that you received from Mr. Nada dated April 7, based on my position on July 7, 2010 to the Riptor. In your packets is a packet that I put together. And I think for the record, I think our mission statement for the Chamber of Commerce should be made read at this time. And that's, "The South Kingston Chamber of Commerce supports and enhances the business community of Southern Rhode Island and promotes opportunities for growth and development of its membered businesses." And in your packet, there's a trolley use plan for the greater Wakefield, Rhode Island area that was put together within the last, what was it, Andy, last 10 days maybe. And it's pretty exciting and I'll be glad to walk through it with you if you'd like at this time, relative to the exciting, fun way to travel around South Kingston. And we experienced a successful, and that's, I have to say, successful 2010 season of a trolley service that was free, F-R-E-E, to the community for a two-hour loop flex service in our community of South Kingston and also our neighbor, Narragansett, Rhode Island. The business community of South Kingston and Narragansett supported to the tune of, and I was in this room during budget season, maybe a month ago, and I think Mr. O'Neill or someone asked me the question. It was to a tune of $54,000 that we fundraised through the business community for economic reasons to support this nice way to travel in our community. The service was on a seven-day flex service from hours of eight to 10. We took some measurements after the season was over and our measurements showed us that maybe we should alter a few and tweak some things, which we planned to do for the season of 2011 without this proposed trolley that we have at this time. The proposal going forward would be on a Wednesday through Sunday service with a 10 to 10, 10 a.m. to 10 p.m. service for travel. The kit, as I put together here, in fact, I think it's a pretty, Mr. Alfred said there wasn't a plan put together. I think the plan is very much put together. Our mission is there, our goal is there, our mention of the travel, you know, destinations and our locations, our stops. We have affiliation with Riptor. We're allowed to use their facility of stops all along our route. And it's exciting to deal with Riptor. I think they've been just one great state agency, in my opinion, to deal with since last July. And I think it's just providing the, the visitors, the shopping in our South County, to our boutique shops, to our hometown restaurants, all the good things that someone will enjoy when you go to Williamsburg, Virginia, when you go to Baltimore, when you go to Philadelphia. The trolley service, which you have to pay, by the way, the trolley service here is very unique because it's free. You can explore the, the Southern Rhode Island area, as I stated in here, and I put in the potential routes. Some of the things that we like to talk with as we develop the lease would be to tie in maybe a little bit of, of the great village of Peastdale. I don't know if we'll get a village stop there because that, that's an opportunity for support of the businesses in that surrounding little network of village. But I think we want to bring that forward. We want to talk to the town about some, doing some things of tweaking the route a little bit, going to Robinson Street, going to Belmont Market Shopping Center, going back out to Route 108 and over to the beach areas, the Scarboroughs and so forth. The, I think it's been an awesome opportunity to work collaboratively with the state, working with our town, and also working, I have to say, working with the chamber has been, it's probably been a trip for Andy Nada, but it's been a, it's been a exciting time for us. The description of the trolley, you have some documentation to that effect. It's a 1999 Chance Trolley. It's very eco-friendly. It has mileage of around 230,000 miles on it. Wheel, rear wheel, wheel drive. It seats about 35 people. It's handicap accessible. And it has, it probably has the best condition of the four, five, or six of them that they had, that they gave us first shot at this one. I was very emphatic that either Mr. Alfred or Mr. Nada see the vehicle before we got to this point this evening, which last week Andy and I took a joint trip up and he has some photos too, which he tries to, tries to email me, but I haven't seen him yet because it, it just doesn't come through my system at the chamber. But the, just in a nutshell here, I just think it's a great thing that we can jump on board with. It's, it's good for business, it's good for the community. We're working, and my job this evening is to keep the businesses happy, and my job daily, I guess, is to keep the businesses happy. We're very pleased to get to this point with a possibility, once you decide this this evening, to work with the town, to develop the next step, to, to manage, to manage and, you know, congestion in your downtown area, to reduce pollution, some of the things I put down today. The tourists, the residents, it's going to really help with the shop local campaign that we try and enhance daily at, at the chamber, working with over 600 members. So, your confidence in us and your confidence in the community will be shown by your confidence this evening with a, with the, hopefully supporting this proposal at this time. And I'll be glad to answer any little questions, working with Steve and Andy at this time.
Questions here at the table? Jim?
Yeah, Joe and/or Steve. The town takes possession of this. Do we take possession after it's on the highway and gets down here so we see it's in good running order? Do we know what the cost may be to see if this is in good working order? All the, you know, department rules for vehicles on roads. Who absorbs the costs and at what point would the town take possession?
We would take possession of it from the Riptor's depot and we would bring it to South Kingston. You know, Joe's presented the upside of all of this. The downside is that, or the practical side is, that the first thing that needs to be done with that vehicle is there needs to be a mechanical assessment and a determination on what steps are going to be necessary as far as the maintenance on that vehicle. We believe that it's in proper running order, it's been inspected for it to come to South Kingston. But before you're going to sell advertising or before you're going to put that on the road, you're going to have to do that type of an assessment of the vehicle to make sure that it can stay on the road for an extended period of time. The first step that I think needs to be taken, once we have possession of it, would be for the chamber to be able to do the assessment so that it could then determine whether or not it's a viable project. If they come back and find out that the engine is not in proper repair and then it's going to cost X thousands of dollars to repair it, it may change how this, how the use of that vehicle would, would, would be put into service. So, I think first we have to get, if we get the vehicle and we can't work out a deal because it's going to be too expensive to operate it, then the town would be in a position to need to dispose of the vehicle. But, you know, if, if we live in Joe's world where everything is going to be fine, then we need to get the position, get the vehicle down, do the assessment, and then determine who would operate the vehicle on behalf of the chamber. Because that's another determination that has not been made and isn't presented in the booklet that you got from Joe. I'm certainly willing to work with them. I understand the time sensitiveness based on Riptor's concerns. But the first step would be for the council to provide authorization for us to be able to take possession of it. Second step would be for the chamber to have a review made of the vehicle before they- of the vehicle before they sign into any lease agreements with the town to ensure that the vehicle was in proper condition. And third, with the lease agreement, for us to determine who would be, who would be responsible for the operation of the vehicle, because we would own it. Whoever took the lease on it would be responsible for all the O and M, as well as the insurance requirements for that vehicle.
All right. Yeah, I mean, I certainly like all of us to have a positive thought process towards this. Is there any history of replacing engines? Is any idea of what we could look at for costs here, from tires to if the engine had to be replaced? Do we have some number five, 10, 15,000? I ask that because I'm looking against the funding number, the 54,000 raised last year. I just, we would like to know from the offset, just a outside worst-case scenario, if the engine goes, the tires go, what else could go on these things, but...
You're asking the same questions that I'm asking, Jim. I look at it and say, if Ripter is taking it off the line, and it's got 230,000 miles, then from a, from Ripter's perspective, there may be repair costs that are coming in the future. From a vehicle perspective, it could be that that vehicle's still good for another 100,000 miles, but we're not going to know that until somebody goes through it. If that vehicle were to need an engine replacement on it, you're talking about, you know, probably 12,000 to 15,000 to 20,000 dollars for those types of replacements. So that's why I think it's important to get a proper assessment as to what the vehicle condition is before there's final agreements made with the Chamber. Plus, we need to know what the cost of that operation is going to be, and how they're going to generate the dollars necessary to be able to put that vehicle online. Again, the, the present trolley program is paid for through the advertising that's done on each of the different sides of the vehicle. Whether or not there's enough additional customers that are willing to advertise on a second trolley is yet to be seen, but the market hasn't been tested either. So all of those things are important, on whether we end up taking a trolley and then finding that we can't put the second trolley online, either because of the mechanical conditions, or because there isn't sufficient private sector interest in putting that second vehicle online. But if we don't do that due diligence, we'll never make the determination or know what the, what the real answer would be. So I think the first step is to, is to get approval to be able to take possession of the vehicle. Hopefully then, the assessment can be done. It comes back fine, and then at that point, we talk with the Chamber as to how they're going to operate that vehicle for the, for that summer period.
And then lastly, as part of that question, did Ripter take this offline because of Ripter's budget issues, or was it age, or no use for it? Do we know why they took it offline?
I would assume it's functional obsolescence based on their formulas. I think it would also be a product of funding availability for their replacement schedule. So I can't tell you that that vehicle's going to last 100,000 miles, or whether it's going to have trouble making it into South Kingston. But I think we, we still have an opportunity to be able to determine whether it's a doable project or not. And, you know, and we can work with the Chamber to, to come up with at least that, that next step.
Okay, further comments here at the table. Carol?
Joe, you weren't prepared to enter into a lease at this point anyway, right? I mean, you, you need more information?
No, our Board of Directors haven't even discussed this item.
Okay.
Because it's just happened so quickly.
Right.
Based on Ripter's, the reason why, they've just purchased a whole new fleet of diesel vehicles to the tune of five. This is one of their five that they took off the road, and probably the best one. But we're not ready to discuss that, but I'm ready. Everything Mr. Alfred just said about a mechanical assessment is very true, and we want that to happen too.
Now, is the Chamber willing to do that assessment, or don't you know that yet?
That's the plan that we plan to discuss with our board, to come to Mr. Alfred and discuss with his staff the next steps. And we'll be willing to do that.
And one more question. How much, how much money do you generate with the advertising on the bus?
The advertising last year came to $54,000.
$54,000.
It's a roving, what we call, we promote it with the business community, a roving billboard of, of trolley. This trolley will have less on it because it has a two-door, if you see the pictures that I have, or Andy has too. It's a two-door, one side, so that one side is going to have less exterior panels of advertising this year. We can say that with the less days that we're going to be running, and probably with the less season, if we get it onboard prior to, we're probably going to be in the neighborhood of, of advertising total of about $20,000 this year.
And do you think there's other businesses out there?
Yes. Yes, we do. Yes, I can say that. Yes.
Enough of a...
We do have some businesses that want to do a multiple-type thing with the local express versus the exterior express, if I can say it that way.
So there is a demand for this advertising, is what you're saying?
There's a demand for the use, and there's a demand for advertising.
Good.
Just one clarification. The Chamber of Commerce does not have a business interest in the trolley loop that is in place today. That is run by Southern Rhode Island Trolley
LLC. LLC, yeah.
It's an LLC.
Yep.
It's a for-profit business that is certainly affiliated with the Chamber, but the Chamber has...
Both Chambers, right. Both Chambers.
But the, with both Chambers, but the Chambers have no financial interest in that program. If that makes a profit, it's part of that LLC. If it loses money, it's part of that LLC. That's why I'm also concerned with how a vehicle that we would have as a municipal asset would be used in a program, or how the, how it would be proposed to be used through the Chamber. If, in fact, they're looking to have it with Southern Rhode Island Trolley, it introduces a private for-profit business that's involved in whatever relationship the Chamber is looking to establish with the town. That's why I say there's a lot of things that need to be determined here before we decide whether you've got a deal or you don't have a deal. But obviously, it all starts where if the trolley's not available, we've got no deal.
Kathy?
Well, Steve actually addressed some of my concerns. Obviously, this needs to be ironed out more, and I just want to make it clear that the town of South Kingston will not be financing any of this. We just would be taking on that trolley if this does occur, and there should be no, I just don't want it coming back and being a, you know...
I never sit, my, my position has never been to that effect, Ms. Fogarty.
No, I just want to make sure that that's clear, because people see that we're taking on this trolley, and just want to make sure that they understand that we are not putting anything into it.
That will be in the condition of the lease?
Yep.
If I can just...
From the registration of the vehicle, to the, the licensing of the vehicle, to the, the insurance, that's a concern that we all have, and we're, we're well aware of that. We went through it all last year with the 2010. Hopefully, you took a ride on it and enjoyed it, because I think it's something that could be a very unique thing for this great community, and the business community for supporting it. I think it's very important.
If I can just cite next to the last page on the brochure that you gave us, insurance, licensing, registration, maintenance, storage, and all related costs are not required by the town of South Kingston, Rhode Island. So...
Thank you for seeing that. It's in there, yes.
Right. Further questions here at the table?
Just one more. Joe, who owns the other trolley? Is it the LLC?
Yes. Purchased through the efforts of the advertising. Okay. Southern Rhode Island Trolley LLC, they have a website. They're filed with the Secretary of State's office. There's, there's owners that probably lost money last year, and they got documentation to that effect, if you want to see them in executive session, I guess. But I think the LLC that you're referring to, Carol, is, is Doug Brady, who's the manager of the Holiday Inn, and he has two associate members, and it's all on record with the Secretary of State's office.
Further questions here at the table? Just going to open, open it up to the public for any questions before we take a vote? Okay. Does this resolution work? I know...
Do we need to amend the...
Yeah.
Resolution?
Yeah. How about this one?
I think that the only thing you need to do is to deal with the first part of it, which would be a resolution authorizing the town manager to provide for acceptance of the, the trolley from Rhode Island Public Transit Authority. And then at that point, we would initiate the discussions with the Chamber. And again, I, I guess I want to make sure that there's clarity here. The issue of, of a lease, what is going to predate any lease is a vehicle assessment. The vehicle assessment is going to have to predate the ownership transfer, or a lease transfer, whatever it may be. That's got to be done before you, before I even deal with a lease agreement with, with the Chamber, so that both the Chamber knows and the town knows what the condition of that vehicle is, or what the cost of repair would be. And that will need to be done if the Chamber wants to consider the lease through the Chamber. Correct? I mean, certainly, Joe, you've got to talk with your Board of Directors, but, you know, I'm not sure how we proceed.
Ripter, the way Ripter has it, Ripter's coming from the state agency to the community, municipality, and that's, that's the way they want it. That's the way I think we all want it in this room. And I think we want to be the person that helps, or the body that helps the community and the tourists to function for transportation in this community at a low, low cost, and with the business community's support. So I think your community has to accept the vehicle. Do we have staff that we could, mechanic staff, that we could look at it at a reasonable price of, of town support to look at that vehicle? I mean, they deal with front-end loaders, they deal with payloaders, they deal with heavy-duty dump trucks, and things of that nature. And I think maybe that's where the town could support us as a community, to have this for our community.
This is where I've got the difficulty, because I can't deal with a lease unless I know the condition of the vehicle. My staff at, mechanical staff, is not going to be able to provide for that type of an assessment if they're not familiar with that type of equipment. This is a compressed natural gas engine combustion system that's used for this vehicle. So I'm not sure who is qualified to be able to look at that. Again, I think that the only thing the council could do tonight is to provide me with authorization to be able to accept the vehicle if, based on additional review, we find it's appropriate to do. So we would have that within the next two weeks. The town was never interested in becoming a part of a trolley system. If we're being asked to incur a cost to enable a lease to be put together, I'm not sure that, that's an avenue we should be taking.
Someone have a motion? Because I have one. Yep. Any further conversation here at the table?
Let's clarify this.
You ready for the motion?
What we're voting for. Let's clarify. We're just voting for the first part of it up to the Chamber, up to the authority.
Only thing I'm asking you for is authorization, if necessary, to be able to take possession of the vehicle. I'm not going to, I'm not asking you to direct me to take, take control of the vehicle, but rather provide me with authorization, if we feel it appropriate, to take possession of the vehicle.
All right. I move that we authorize the town manager to accept the 1999 Chance trolley from the Rhode Island Public Transit Authority.
Do you want to add with further discussion with the Chamber?
I guess what, what I'm suggesting is that the resolution should be authorizing the town manager to be able to accept the vehicle.
All right.
I don't want it to be specific that I have to take the vehicle. I want it permissive, that the council is providing authorization for me to make the final decision on whether to take title to the property.
So I move that we authorize the town manager to be able to accept the 1999 Chance trolley from the Rhode Island Public Transit Authority.
And then I'll report back to you in two weeks on what steps I've taken, if any.
We have a motion and a second. Further discussion? Any discussion from the audience? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, abstention, motion carries, 500. I think that is the end of our agenda for tonight. Do we have a motion to adjourn?
Motion to adjourn.
Motion to adjourn, second. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye, opposed, abstention. Motion carries. Meeting adjourned. 1110.